All right, so welcome to the Deschutes County Board of Commissioners meeting for 9:00 AM Wednesday, September 1st, 2021. Welcome to Nick LeLac as our dual county administrator for month of September. So this is switching roles and now Tom's in charge and Nick will be here all month with them. So thank you so much. At this time, first item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A little bit of information for tomorrow. We're having a joint meeting with the city of Bend. It's going to be a video call. So just at the beginning of the meeting, we're going to do the pledge of allegiance and also the city of Bend is offering a land acknowledgement at the beginning of that meeting. For the pledge of allegiance, I will provide a flag. So we're all going to be on video. So I'll provide a little flag on the video, but you know, it's that point where if we don't stand up because we're on video, I don't want to show my belly button. So I'm just acknowledging that. I've already thought it through a little bit about what might happen tomorrow. So, or my belt buckle. At this time, citizen input. And do we have somebody on Zoom today to join us?
I believe so. Susan Fisher.
Okay. So this is our citizen input for items not on the agenda. Want to thank, it sounds like we have a person joining us on Zoom today. We have nobody else in the room. This will be opportunity for three-minute testimony. So thank you, Susan Fisher, for Thank you for joining us, Susan. Mute is still on. There we go. So Susan, if you've joined us, you might have been transitioned from Zoom. So you are in the live meeting at this time for citizen input. Oh, we're so close.
Shit.
There we go.
What's that?
Welcome. So this is citizen input. Thank you for joining us. So Susan, are you available to speak on citizen input? It looks like you are not on mute with the hand. There you go. So we can hear you at this time, Susan. So I'll acknowledge, so Susan, you have provided emails this morning to us. I have not reviewed them yet, but this is topic for citizen input. We're so close with the Looks like we may be missing your...
Shit.
I don't know if it's bandwidth or not. Sounds like it may be a bandwidth issue and I do apologize.
Yeah, you can't hear me, I think.
You're breaking up.
The audio is coming in now.
Right now, we got you. So go ahead.
I am talking. You can hear me?
At the moment.
Okay. So I just... So...
There is a phone number feature on our Zoom call.
I think just read, yeah, maybe just read.
Oh, we're so close.
Let's see here.
So we hear, every once in a while, we hear a few words, but we're not hearing it. So let's, let's move on. Susan, we do have an email. You can call us directly. And I mean, if you want to dial in with a phone number, if you can hear me, there is a Zoom phone number. I'm not sure if it's on the front of our agenda or not, which does give you audio directly into our meeting.
And Susan's written input addressed masks and vaccines, concerns about masks and vaccines, and also concerns about water supplies in Arnold Irrigation District.
Man, those are all topics of the day. Well, Susan, thank you very much. As I say, now we know that it might have been bandwidth because it looked like the connection was there, but it just wasn't going to work. So at this time, are there any other phone numbers on Zoom? Okay, seeing none and nobody in the room. We do have multiple emails on masks and vaccine mandate discussion, and then also a trailer parked at Harper, Spring River Road by Harper Bridge. And there's multiple emails on that. And I'm sure all commissioners are up to speed on these. We are getting all of these emails real time. So this is acknowledging in our board meeting that we have received these emails.
And it is being worked on.
Harper Bridge, Spring River Road.
Right. The person that is there, whose trailer was left, and the neighborhood is incredibly concerned because they think more trailers are coming in. I just heard from Joe DeLuca, who is actually handling it, and actually offered to go down and talk to the person myself. I know they really tried to seriously help. And anyway.
So yeah, and I'll acknowledge that there was a moment where, you know, do we have the authority to make somebody move from that location? And legally, we do. So, you know, it's not posted, no overnight camping, but whatever we do, it's, it's coming.
Yes, we are working on solutions. We'll have something back for you by your next meeting.
Well, the neighborhood is not happy. And I don't blame them.
Okay, so that's citizen input for our meeting today. At this time, consent agenda, quite a few items on the consent agenda today.
So move the consent agenda through item 14, I believe, because then we have to reconvene.
Second. Yep. So we'll just acknowledge bicycle pedestrian advisory committee, dog board, audit committee, just all kinds of good stuff on here today. So quite an agenda, but just a whole bunch of individual items.
And I want to thank the Davises, Sam and Carolyn. They actually served for six years on the dog board. And I think that's public service at its finest. So thank them. And I got to actually tour the Veterans Village yesterday. It is so close to being done. Thank you for all the wonderful community support of that project. The 15 tiny homes with their bathrooms look like they're almost ready. So anyway, hopefully the next couple of weeks we can start having people come, start moving in because it was freezing this morning.
Yes, it was. Okay, so there's been a motion and second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. At this time, we will convene as the governing body of the Sun River Service District. And this is a consent agenda also. So there's three items on here for the budget committee and managing board.
I'll move approval of consent agenda items 17.
Commissioner, I think Dave left the room, but I'm, as the governing body, I think you may have to approve each one.
Oh, okay.
Individually.
Yeah.
I'll move approval of item 15 on our consent agenda, consideration of board signature to reappoint Mike Goki to the Sun River Service District Budget Committee.
And I'll second that motion.
Any other discussion? Seeing none. Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Adair?
Yes.
And chair votes yes.
And I'll make the motion of board signature to reappoint Gerhard Bering to the Sun River Service District Board position number two.
Second. Any other discussion? Seeing none. Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And chair votes yes.
And I'll move board approval of consent agenda item number 17, board signature to reappoint Beth Butler to the Sun River Service District Budget Committee.
I'll second it.
Any discussions? Seeing none. Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Okay, at this time, we'll reconvene as the governing body of Deschutes County, item number 18, Mount Bachelor biomass project. Welcome. So I see we have Megan on the video, John McLeod on Zoom, and then...
Andrew Hayden.
Andrew, thank you for joining us.
Do I keep my mic on, I assume?
Yeah, so it's on and then the button is just to turn it off for momentarily. So it's, it's hot now.
Okay, okay. All right, great. Well, I see Megan and John here on Zoom. So we've got other, Megan's my colleague at Wisewood and John McLeod is the CEO of Mount Bachelor. We made a little PowerPoint presentation to show you to kind of go over the, over the project. And we will click through that now. So the, the project is for the West Village base area of Mount Bachelor. And it's a district energy project. So it's going to heat multiple buildings with a single, single unit. Click through here. See, there we go. Just have a short outline and talk a little bit about the project here. The main partners is of course, Mount Bachelor, being the sixth largest ski resort in the US, located right here. And their parent company, Powder, which owns 10 resorts around the country, has launched, has launched the Play Forever Commitment to Sustainability, which is their initiative to tackle their energy consumption and other aspects of their operations and making them more sustainable. And then there's us. We're Wisewood Energy. We're a biomass project developer that works throughout the US West. We've completed over 60 different kinds of projects and constructed 20, 20 different projects. And we have worked with Mount Bachelor over the years. I'll go through the timeline here. Let's see. I'll show you a little bit about what we've done in the, in the West. Here's a project that we did in California in Plumas County, right by where the Dixie Fire has been burning. And it's a similar technology to what's proposed in, for Mount Bachelor, a little smaller at 400 kilowatts of thermal energy and a 35 kilowatt electrical component. The project for Mount Bachelor is just thermal, and it's about a megawatt of thermal. So it's one and a half times larger than, than this project.
And Andrew, that's a county building?
That's a county building, correct. That's Plumas County Annex that houses most of what's kind of in this building, including Health and Human Services and other things like that. And there's enough, enough energy that we, later, if the adjacent Feather River Junior College wants to connect, they, they could. So that's hopefully something that'll happen in the future. Here's a project from Alaska. This is a pellet boiler that we put at the Ketchikan International Airport. Again, smaller, but similar type of technology. And then this is our most recent project that we finished up, which is a pellet, a pellet mill out in Burns. So it's a pellet mill that makes wood pellets and alfalfa pellets for feed. This is a little bit about us. The, as you guys know, Mount Bachelor is a key part of the recreation and leisure industry in central Oregon, third largest industry here in the area, and Mount Bachelor is the fifth largest employer in the area. And Bend has been considered the best, one of the best ski, 14th best ski towns in the world, showing how important Mount Bachelor is to the region here. We started this project in, or Mount Bachelor started the project in 2010 by, during the ARRA days, looking at like a power plant that would be located at the base of the mountain. But it was...
What were you referring to when you said AR?
It was the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act.
Okay.
Kind of the Obama days there at 2010 was something that was, a study was commissioned through one of those programs and it designed or kind of did a conceptual design for a large power plant that was determined really didn't fit the needs. So it didn't really go anywhere. In 2013, they looked at a pellet system. So they would heat one or a couple of the buildings with a pellet boiler system, but they felt like it kind of missed an opportunity to use the forestry residuals that were being generated right around the mountain, which is kind of what, which is the opportunity that we're pursuing now and would have a direct connection to wildfire reduction and all the things that, and forest health, which is what is on everyone's mind. And then in 2014, they applied for a US Forest Service grant to look at the opportunity to, to switch from a pellet system to one that would use the local residuals directly. And then that's when they retained us. And then they retained us again in 2016 to do a complete design and engineering of the project. And that's the shovel-ready project that we have now. And then in 2018, Powder announces its Play Forever Commitment to Sustainability. And then, starting a year and a half ago and up till today, we're looking to raise the funds required to build the project. Here's an overview of the site plan. So the biomass boiler would run underground pipe to the four largest buildings in the West Village, including Ski Patrol Building, West Village Lodge, Mountain Gateway Building, and the Todd Lake Building. And at current propane rates, Mount Bachelor is spending about $270,000 a year on propane. And it's actually using about 150,000 gallons of propane. There was a news report that said 150 gallons, and it's actually 150,000 gallons, just to be clear.
It's just those little details.
Just those little details.
Yes. Hear them all the time.
So the biomass system would lower, based on the cost of the woody biomass residuals that are being generated nearby, would lower the cost of operations by about two-thirds. Construction costs are currently estimated at 5.5 million. That's from about a half a year ago. So, you know, before construction, we'll have to do one more round of updating of any, you know, if there's been building cost increases, they've kind of gone up and down, but we'll, we'll be tracking that. But it should be pretty close. And we'll be covering 92% of the propane use at the mountain. And then all this, I think you guys know, which is that this is a fire-adapted forest ecosystem in the region. And there's been a lot of suppression over the past 100 years. And so we've got these uncharacteristically severe wildfires happening with a lot of regularity. So the movement to move the ladder fuels out of the understory and kind of get back to that normal regime is on everybody's mind and on the Forest Service's mind. And what we would do is create an outlet for that. Instead of having that material piled and burned at the, at the site, which is currently what's done most of the time, they'll pile up the small diameter trees, pile them up, and then when the weather conditions are right, they'll burn it just in a pile. And so what we're looking to do is take about 1,000 tons of that per year and replace the 150,000 gallons of propane annually at Mount And there's no shortage of material. So we actually are taking just a fraction of what's available in the region. But we want to get something that's tangible, that people can see productive use of this material and what can be done, and then potentially leading to future projects. And as you guys know, this is sort of a great characteristic understanding of what, image of what these projects do. They remove small diameter, low-value trees and leave the larger fire-adapted trees behind to grow even larger. And in terms of air quality and carbon, open pile burning is quite, quite a problem in terms of particulate matter. So as you guys know, also, of course, wildfire, certain times of the year can be terrible and air quality can really be terrible throughout the regions. So what, what our project does is take the material that would be burned in an open pile or in a wildfire and burns it in a highly efficient, modern boiler system that has additional pollution controls, including filters that will essentially make the emissions very, very low, close to, like a gas or an oil boiler, so very low. And we will avoid all that combusted open pile burning material. And so that's a pretty straight shot for the air quality or emissions component. And then for the carbon side, you can kind of see this chart on the right. Essentially, the, on the left of the chart on the right, the 844, that's the propane that's being combusted. The, the orange is the material that is, would be burned in a pile. And then on the right, that same material that would be burned in a pile is burned for heating and none of the propane, or 91% of the propane is reduced. So the carbon cycle is similar to what nature would have in terms of a fire or, or, you know, wildfire or, or rotting or decomposing in the forest. We're just tapping into that cycle and getting rid of all the fossil fuel. So that's, that's the way we conceive of it. And so it's, while there is carbon emissions associated with burning wood, it's the natural biogenic cycle that's currently occurring already on the forest. And we're just kind of dipping into that stream and getting, getting rid of the propane. So here's some images that we had created. Then the building was designed by BBT architects here in town, at least the conceptual designs here. And it's going to sit where we showed you before. Here's a little overview of the technology, what it looks like. You've got the woodchip storage area with a walking floor. You've got the, the red and white and blue device, which is the boiler. And then you have the emissions control components. And then those two containers are ash, ash containers to take the ash back down to, to town.
Can you explain the walking floor a little bit? I've heard that terminology.
Sure. So you can kind of see under the, under the, under the loader there, there's those ladder-looking red bars. And what that, what that is, is a semi truck will come and offload into that bay. And then they can use one of their existing loaders that they use for snow to manipulate the pile if they need to or get more in there. And then the floor slides under the woodchips with a wedge. And then when it goes forward, it hooks the material and pulls it forward. So very simple automated system. And it will allow, allow them about two weeks of storage there on site. And so that's...
So once the, once the hog fuel, the rough chips are on the floor, it just keeps moving it back to the back corner where it can be augured into the boiler or something?
Correct. Let me go to this one here. Yeah. So you see the woodchip pile and then just above it, you can, there's a kind of a shadow area there. That's an additional stoker that runs transverse or atop, in front of, in front of the woodchips. And that pushes the material right up into the boiler.
Yep.
So it's all automatic. So, yeah, I think it's a functional design for the mountain and it's going to really, really work really well for what they need to do. So that's, that's, that's the design. That's what would go in there. And, and it's, like we said on our TV interview, it's, you know, it's something that is going to be both attractive. People can tour it, come see it and understand what we're doing there. But it's not going to be so big that it's going to be, you know, anything that people, I think, would have any concern about, like a power plant or something like that. It's a more appropriately scaled system. So in conclusion, modern wood heating with these new systems is about 90% efficient. So all the wood that's coming there is, you know, getting fully utilized. There's no, really no waste. In fire-adapted regions like central Oregon, we're creating a meaningful market for the low-value woody biomass that would otherwise really just be burned or, or left to rot. It would really put Mount Bachelor at the forefront of sustainability in the West, in the western ski areas. We're already getting interest from a lot of people in Tahoe area. They want to do something. And they're seeing that with Mount Bachelor doing this, they kind of, that's the seal of approval, that they kind of now understand, hey, this is something we could do. And they just had, they're experiencing a fire right now in the Tahoe Basin for the first time in 40 years. So they're all completely galvanized by, by this issue at this time. So they see this as a real opportunity to do something And what we're here today to ask for is essentially some help with financing the project. Powder's committed to it and, you know, will be, of course, paying for most of this project, but we are looking for some assistance to, to bring the project over the finish line. It's a little bit, in their list of capital projects, they have all kinds of things, you know, new chairlifts, restaurants, moving things around. So they have a bunch of different things. And I think having some support from local, local entities will help them build it quicker and also show the support that they have from the community and feel good about putting it in. So that's, that's part of what today's presentation is about. And that's the end of our presentation. And I think John and Megan are on Zoom and can chime in as well if anybody asks questions.
Oh, I have a question. Andrew, did you say that it's going to, there will be still, what, 8% propane being used of the 270,000?
Yeah, about eight.
Okay. And then if you look at that cost savings, it really, I mean, I know that you're, you're cleaning up the forest, which is critical here, but it's like 21 years of like before you actually, because of the 5.5 million, is it not?
Right. That's right.
Okay. I just was looking at my numbers and thinking, well, that's, that's not the true picture. But, you know, a lot of times when you refinance, you think, okay, it's going to take me four years to get back my savings. And, you know, in this, we're not putting a value to what you're putting a value to what you're doing to the forest, but clearly, we know it needs to be cleaned up.
Right. It's, it's sort of, well, two, two things about that is propane is historically low right now.
Yeah, you're calculating, what, at $1.80?
Yeah. And it could, it's been as high as $3 not too long ago. So over the course of the project, that payback, you know, if there's a spike in propane prices, the payback all of a sudden comes up to 10 years possibly. We don't know. But I think you're correct in saying that the real value is in that infrastructure that utilizes the, the forest material is essentially local renewable. A lot of, more of the money that they spend on energy will go into the local economy with forest contractors and so forth. So it's kind of that whole picture. And then it's also, we're taking four propane boilers offline. That, some, we have a couple, one of the mechanical rooms is newer. The others are a little bit older. So that's something that was going to come in the next few years pretty soon. And instead of doing business as usual and going back to another propane system, we're kind of preemptively getting, taking all those offline and putting them on one, one new system. So it's infrastructure in that sense.
By America angle to this, because likely propane in this area is being generated from fossil fuels mined in Canada. So you think about spending these dollars on fuel. If we spend them on fuel that's generated locally, that's, that's energy money that's recycling, circulating in our economy. If we buy propane produced from fossil fuels in Canada, we are essentially exporting our wealth to Canada.
So when the boiler is running, is this a hot water system or a steam system? I'm just thinking a little bit of the technology. How, how does it get transferred?
So all the existing buildings have a hot water distribution system. So what we're going to do is make hot water, pipe it up in insulated pipes underground around the back end of those buildings, and tee into all their mechanical rooms, and then take over for the existing system.
So the system is currently hot water propane heated?
Correct.
Wonderful. Okay.
That part's pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
I'd be curious to hear a little bit from John about Mount Bachelor and Powder's perspective on the project, why you're interested in doing this, kind of, from a, from a investor or a financial perspective, you know, kind of how, what, what the, what the commitment is and, and why, why the benefits of this project justify a certain amount of investment to you?
Yeah, I think, thanks, Phil. Oh, Commissioner Chang, I should say. We have been at this for a while and have seen the benefits of this for quite a while. And, you know, it's come very much into focus in recent years with the wildfires that we're seeing. And I think, you know, when we look at this, we're looking mostly at those wins as being the big wins, in terms of wildfire reduction, you know, utilizing local resources to harvest the fuel and bring it to Mount Bachelor. And I think, as Commissioner Adair pointed out, the financial returns are, you know, below that of a typical kind of commercial for-profit investment. And, but, so our primary interest really is in, you know, our partnership with the Forest Service, you know, responsibility to the community to help reduce pollution. Those are the big wins really that we're interested in achieving through this project. The financial wins are, you know, I guess, a bit more on the thin side from a, you know, pure financial investment standpoint, which is why we're seeking some public support for it. But nonetheless, we know that there's a role for us to play. It's a facility that will, you know, hopefully live long at Mount Bachelor and serve that purpose for a long time. As you pointed out earlier, there is plenty of fuel available from existing forestry management practices and wildfire reduction practices to support this plant for, you know, a very long time. So there's just lots of wins associated with this. And that's one of the reasons we're excited about it. And, and the way that this has transformed from our original vision to what we think is a very, very relevant project right now.
Great.
So I have a question regarding finance. Would, does this fit the parameters of like an investment for Deschutes County? I don't know, maybe Greg Mullen would be someone to answer that. And, you know, when you say low interest rate, what, what do you think is low? Because our investment rate at this moment is pretty, our return is pretty low. But I'm just wondering, I know that we have to be so careful on our investments. That's one of the good things when we look at our portfolio. A couple of years ago, I, we are, our investments are so much more conservative. And, you know, what, what would be the guarantee of our payback? So I'm, you know, I'm just wondering if those are questions maybe Greg would have to answer.
Yeah, Commissioners, I know Greg is watching. I'm not sure if he's on Zoom. But so you do have some options on, on how you might, if you're supportive of the project, invest, and I say invest generically, you know, whether that's a grant or a true investment where we're expecting a return. And that was mentioned in the PowerPoint presentation just now as more of a loan, which the county could consider an investment. And in that case, there will likely have to be more, if that's the avenue you'd like to pursue, probably a more detailed discussion with Mount Bachelor and Wildwood on what exactly that looks like, the terms, in other words, of a loan agreement, which would include an amortization schedule as well as security, default, things like that. We really honestly haven't explored that as yet. But if that is the board's direction, we'd be happy to do that. And Greg may be available to add anything else this morning as well.
One of, one of the terms that we, we definitely need to discuss right off the bat would be duration. Or, and John and Andrew, do you, do you have any sense of kind of what kind of a length term you would be interested in for a loan?
Longer term is better for the project, of course. And lower interest is better. Those are, those two things.
There you go. There's the answer.
It's a-
I mean, are we talking 10 years? Are we talking?
10 or more possibly. Depends on how, we have pro formas and we can provide all of that. And what we're doing now is just seeing which parties want to come in and be a part of the project and then kind of, kind of stack them out and see what, who needs what. But essentially, you know, it is a very utility-like project. It is essentially just providing thermal energy. You know, it's on-site, so it's not a, it's not a public utility. It's kind of a private utility. But in terms of the return and the stability, it's very much like a utility kind of project. So it's not risky. The proof, the technology's proven, and the counterparty is highly credible here in, you know, with Powder and Mount Bachelor. So we would expect that to be reflected in the terms, that it's not a risky investment. And of course, you know, grants are always wonderful as well. So maybe if that proves to be easier from a paperwork perspective or whatever, you know, that'd be something to look at as we get into the details. But we have all the, all the modeling completed, and we can provide pro formas to whoever needs to see them. And, and then we're just in the different discussions with people about potential assistance, including the Forest Service. We applied to a Forest Service grant that they reviewed our application very highly, but the funds in that program were cut unexpectedly between when we applied and when we heard that. They said they just didn't have the funds. But they're very much in favor of this. And so what we're doing is kind of seeing who wants to play into the, come into the project and be a part of it, and then see what people need from, from the investment. But in simple terms, low-interest, long-term debt is, is like the best thing for a project like this.
Yeah, I would just add to that by saying, you know, we're seeking a, a package of funding to the extent that we're able to obtain some grant funds from different programs. And as Andrew pointed out, we think that we stand a very strong chance of obtaining some funding through the Forest Service. And the existence of grant funding within the overall financing package obviously improves the investment returns and stability, you know, for the rest of the investors involved in the project. So, you know, that's the stage we're at. And we're, you know, as I said, looking for, I guess, a blended package of grant funding and, and financing to, to be able to pull this off.
So I'm very supportive of grant funding from Deschutes County. So let's, you know, figure out something that would be very valuable. So I'm just letting you know, there's no resistance here for the, the transient room taxes has really grown over the years. And, you know, X amount could be written as a grant in support of this project. So let's work on that. Who is asking for money? You know, so we say Wise Wood Energy is here presenting, Powder Corporation's behind Mount Bachelor. Who, who's going to receive a check if the county writes a check and a grant?
Yeah, I, I'll take that one for a minute. Andrew can probably articulate as well. But we're anticipating at this stage, setting up a, a third party, that would be a temporary entity, to receive the funding, to construct the project, and to, that would be an operating entity for a period of time until all parties were basically returned their, their investment and their, and their returns. And at that point, then ownership of the project would transfer to Mount Bachelor in the long term. And so that entity would probably exist for, you know, somewhere like, you know, 10 to 20 years potentially as the operating cost benefits, so, you know, flowed back through to repay all the investors. So it would be a separate, probably LLC, that we anticipate being the contracting entity for, you know, for the long term, or, you know, mid, midterm, mid to long term.
Well, that helps. That, I mean, that, that gives some clarity on, you know, who's doing this. So, and that makes sense. You know, let's bring something together. Let's make sure there's a low enough risk where, where it makes financial sense for whoever wants to buy into it too. So, you know, it could be funding partners or whatever, then, you know, whoever could do that. So that helps a lot. So then this is an asset on federal land and a long-term lease. So then it's part of the assets of the Mount Bachelor ski facility, which Powder Corporation has, is the umbrella, is, is the leaseholder long-term. And I know there's a kind of a development plan. And what's the horizon for that from Powder's corporate point of view? Is in next 20 years or what? Yeah.
So our, our permit to operate the ski resort runs through 2039 currently. And so, you know, that's the horizon we're looking at. And beyond, hopefully, that would be renewed at that time. So, yeah, there's a long time horizon there. And I think that, like I say, this third-party entity would be the operating entity for a substantial period of time and ultimately then be transferred into the assets of the mountain that we, you know, that are part of our permit. I'm not sure if that makes sense. I think that's what you were saying.
Yeah. And so this happens at the lake resort.
About all that, Tony.
Yeah, no, this happens at the lake resorts too. You know, there's these beautiful little restaurants and docks at the edge of a lake and forest land, and it's a long-term lease. But it's just the, the land ownership is not there. It's just a long-term lease with the federal government. So it's that partnership relationship. And then, because the value is the infrastructure, but it's always under a federal lease, you know. So just acknowledging that.
Yep, yep. That's, that's all correct.
I, I'm, I am, I would also be supportive of a, a grant investment at this time. And but if we're, if we're not interested in, if we're, if two of us aren't interested in, in the financing option, the loan option, I would ask that we consider, we, we, we sort of continue to consider that possibility. And it would be great to hear from, from Greg, for example, just kind of, our, our current investment-
Handheld mics in the corner.
Our, our current investment opportunities, you know, kind of, well, you know, recap for us a little bit of, you know, what we're currently able to do with, with our, our funds in terms of investments. And because I, if from this project, we could obtain this, the securitization that we, that would make us feel comfortable, I'm guessing that we could come up with terms better than some, some, many of our current investment options, which would be a win-win both ways. We could enable a project to move forward, and we could make a, a better investment with some of our county funds than some of the other options that we currently have available.
Yeah, certainly. Can you hear me okay? Okay. I think this is not something that we do regularly and have a whole lot of experience in. But so what I would suggest is that we have a little bit of time to go back in the finance office and work with these folks here and take a look at the numbers and see what our options are, and then come back to you with a set of options that you can decide on from there.
Well, and I think of it as a huge policy step for me personally, to think that we're going to take public dollars and invest them for a return. I mean, we just don't do that. We wouldn't buy a building to speculate in the market. We wouldn't take any dollars and say, okay, well, because of this return on investment and this, this effort, this is why we're investing dollars. So I'm just saying, policy-wise, I think this is, I think it is, you know, I can clarify the ask. I think it's a huge step for, for how we would spend, or invest public dollars and expect a return. So, but as I say, I'm enthusiastic about funding this in a grant in some level.
Okay, but they are asking for 2 million. And so I appreciate, Greg, what you're going to do, because I do expect a return. We bought a building a year ago. And, you know, definitely when we bought that building, it was hopefully going to be a return. We were saving rent. And there's both sides of this issue. I mean, you know, I totally appreciate the fact that you're going to burn a brush that needs to be cleaned up. And why not harness that and actually, you know, make it utilized in, at the mountain? That's, that's wonderful. But if you're going to ask for 2 million, I really, I want to see the numbers. And I know our return has been quite low, but I want to know what we could do. So, thank you, Greg.
And, you know, the, the county does, through the local government investment fund, through, you know, purchases of, of individual securities, we do make investments in the private sector that we expect a return on. And to be able to do that within our own community, to enhance a whole range of community and benefits, and to increase the economic resiliency of, of one of our major local businesses, I, I think that's, that's actually a great opportunity to, to take our investment dollars and have an impact locally instead of just kind of in a dispersed way in the global corporate sector.
Well, and that's a great conversation to have, get real clear on it, is to say, if we're competing with private capital, finding an investment that returns a little bit more than anybody else can have, that may be a conflict also. So you can see, I, I agree. I mean, there's a couple of sides to this.
Yeah. And I mean, just broadly, this is the, you can see in this project, the fundamental challenge of renewable energy projects. Renewable energy projects save you money, you know, after they're, you know, every year after they're, after they're implemented, which creates a payback. But the first costs of getting, getting the renewable energy project built are the, are the bottleneck. That's the bottleneck that prevents us from, from, from doing these projects that increase our energy independence, because we don't produce propane in, in Oregon. Yeah. So it's a, I mean, this is, this is the way that renewable energy, energy projects get done, these energy independence projects get done. Various entities step in to get us past the first cost, so that we can get into the long-term savings that, you know, provide a patient investor with the, the payback to, to make a project work. And unfortunately, for a project of this type, there are fewer incentives than for other kinds of renewable energy projects, you know. Solar, you know, solar power generation, wind power generation, biomass, power generation, all have access to incentives and financing opportunities that a project like this, that's focused on, you know, heat production from biomass, don't have access to. Which is sad, because a project like this, if you strip away the, the incentives, a project like this has better financials than many of those other powered, renewable power generation projects. So in, in my mind, part of what we're doing is, is trying to create parity or equal, you know, equality among incentive opportunities for various kinds of renewable energy projects.
So there, how far would we want to go with a grant request today? As in, I am very supportive and that $500,000 number from revenue of transient room tax, which is in the general fund, we're not talking about the marketing dollars. I mean, I would like to empower this project to know that $500,000 is there. So I'm just saying, you know, if we break this into two, that would be a point in time. And then if, yeah, I mean, if that's an amount that still doesn't, you know, move this forward, that's the follow-on discussion. And, you know, we, we haven't really sliced and diced, but the money is in the bank. The transient room tax has been coming in. And we think of it as the general fund. It's not a separate fund, but it's, you know, logically, we could peel that kind of dollars off and call it a grant program. There's other grant asks out there for, you know, trail improvements on public lands and other, other recreational improvements. But I'm just saying, ah, there's no resistance to this grant amount at this point for myself.
And Mount, Mount Bachelor being the, the, the draw destination that, that helps to generate a lot of those transient room tax dollars. This seems like a very elegant kind of reconnection of the loop between the, the amenities that bring people here and the transient room tax revenues that they generate. Plus, you know, helping us, helping us reduce fire risks, reduce the risks of, of fire disruption to our tourism seasons, improving air quality so that tourists don't have to breathe smoke, all, all, all tourism-related benefits.
So in support of this project, if, if the financing package, I know if it comes together in the next, you know, six months or so, then it could be built next year possibly too. Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah. We can get this going and we could break ground next summer and build it next summer. That would be the fastest timeline, but yeah.
Commissioner Dare, when we, when we separate the grant from the interest, from the loan request, are you supportive of a grant in that amount?
And it is, does not, it will only come from TRT, you're saying?
Well, it's really.
Do we, I know it is not an ARPA, it does not qualify for ARPA funds, correct?
No.
It does not qualify. So then we have to know, is there that half a million dollars sitting in TRT that we could so designate?
There is.
There is.
Commissioners, what I.
What would be the balance remaining then, if we did take this out, Greg? Do you know?
You know, I don't know that off the top of my head, but what I might suggest is we go back and do a little homework and come back with all of the information at one time.
I would appreciate that. I mean, I definitely, you know, I think this is something that has a win-win on both sides of it, but I just want my facts, so that when we make our decision, I think it's incredibly appropriate and, you know.
Yeah, I think if you give us a couple of weeks, we can probably come back with something.
Tom?
But yeah, I was going to say pretty much what Greg said. What we could do is show you the current balance of undesignated TRT, which actually isn't a different fund, a general fund. We do account for it separately. So we have not only our current balance, which is substantially more than half a million, but we can also project sort of what the next few years look like in terms of available funds. And I know the commissioners may have other ideas on how that money could be used or invested. So it's not like it's, it's just wide open. But we could, we could show you different scenarios on different grant amounts. We could also kind of, as Commissioner Dare, Dare suggested, show you what a, you know, a loan might look like, if you're interested in seeing that. But in other words, having a broader discussion with funds available and different options to, to support the project. And we could also, you know, obviously include Mount Bachelor and Wildwood in those discussions. So, you know, we're all kind of seeing the same thing. And then, as Greg said, bring it back in a couple of weeks.
I remember when I wanted to extend fire-free and that was going to cost the county up to half a million dollars. I believe we did last, this last year. And I kept saying, well, what if we have one fire? What does that cost? So to me, extending fire-free was clearly a benefit to the entire county, because it encourages everyone, everywhere, to save money and take, you know, take their waste to our, to our transfer stations and to not, so.
So maybe if they drive up to Mount Bachelor with their pickup truck.
Pick up, drop it off there, right? No, I don't think they need the, all the counties. I think they have plenty of things to burn up there.
Yeah.
That's.
But, but yeah, we haven't drilled down on the benefit that creating a market outlet like this produces for the fuels reduction work on the national forests. You know, I know that from the, the point that, you know, a thinning project is completed, the Forest Service might spend $200 or $300 an acre to pay a bunch of firefighters to stand around and watch a pile of sticks burn, a pile of tops and limbs and small trees. And projects like this create the opportunity for a contractor to pull up at the landing, pay the, pay the Forest Service, actually something like 25 cents a ton, grind this material up, bring it up the, up the Cascade Lakes Highway to, to Mount Bachelor, and help the, the federal government avoid that piling, piling and burning cost for this material, which allows them to get more acres treated. I, I'm, my guess is that a thousand tons of fuel consumption would help the Forest Service. It would basically kind of dramatically reduce those disposal costs, the pile burning costs, across maybe like 100 acres. So, I mean, we could essentially enable, in this way, enable the, the treatment of an additional 100 acres per year. And that, you know, to go to Commissioner Dare's point, you know, the benefit in terms of getting fuel off the, off the landscape is huge. And, and that is a kind of every-year annual benefit, annual return that we would generate for our community through an investment like this.
Okay, so there's, yeah, we're going to set direction to a grant and then discussions about, you know, other financial needs. So, you know, let's do some more deep analysis on that.
We'll, we'll be in touch and we'll have our models that you guys can scrutinize and, and we'll go from there.
Wonderful.
The next two weeks, kind of, yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's fine.
Great.
Hey.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you much for, very much for joining us.
We appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Thanks, John.
So we do have public hearings scheduled for 9:30. And I think this is going to go, well, can we move that to after possibly? I mean. Yeah, so let's do that. So just to acknowledge there are Health Department and the folks that are on here. So let's, we're going to move number 19 after this, item number 20. So we'll do a COVID update at this point in time, and then we'll get back to item 19, which is a public hearing. So thank you very much for joining us.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Oh, look at him trying to straddle that, that allegiance there.
Well.
You better be careful.
Well, this week I have, I don't have such great news to share, so I was going to come with my Buckeye background. But then I realized that in two weeks, I have to come forward and ask for some support. And I thought I better just be balanced from the beginning. So commissioners, thank you so much for inviting us and thanks for your courtesy in letting us proceed. We have, as you know, a bunch of meetings scheduled throughout the day, and this really helps us stay on track. So thank you so much and good morning to all of you.
So this is a Facebook Live event, is just looking for acknowledgement. Yeah, we have a thumbs up on that, so this is being streamed live. This is our COVID-19 update, a very serious time in the matter of COVID-19 and the worldwide pandemic. Please proceed.
Thank you. So for the record, my name is Nahad Sadra Zodi. I'm the Director of Public Health for Deshute County Health Services. I'm joined by Dr. George Conway, who's the Director for Health Services, and Emily Freeland, who is our COVID-19 Supervisor within the Advancement and Protection Section. I'm taking the lead today for this presentation, as Dr. Conway's time might be limited as we get closer to 11:00. I would like to start as always by thanking colleagues who have contributed to the preparations of this presentation, mainly Jesse Turpström and Morgan Emerson and several others, who would greatly appreciate their time and advice and knowledge. Also dedicating this presentation to dozens of our staff who are working day and night, weekdays, weekends, during this surge to contain the virus. Frankly, not many of us, but in particular, those frontline staff are not seeing much of their families and friends and enjoying this beautiful weather that we've had for the last couple of weeks, albeit the smoke as well. But nevertheless, it's been really pleasant weather. Commissioners, we're of course at your disposal and at your service. We do have over 30 slides, so we're happy to spend as much time or low time as you like. I intend to breeze through some of the slides at the very beginning, which have to do with new developments. Each of those, and new developments could take an hour of unpacking. So we're happy to offline or proceed as you please, but I want to be respectful of your time and of course, presenters after us. So with that, let me share my screen, because I nearly forgot. Are you able to see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, we did send the PDF. There are minor adjustments here and there towards the mid to end of the slides. We may have skipped or moved around a couple of the slides, so apologies in advance. So there have been a number of new developments in recent weeks, that I thought it might be helpful to highlight a few of them. First, on August 23rd, last week, FDA granted full approval of the Comirnaty Pfizer BioNTech COVID-19 vaccine. So, so once we reach a licensure point, a brand name is, is determined. And the brand name for the Pfizer BioNTech COVID-19 vaccine is Comirnaty, which is a play on board with taking a few of the first letters of a bunch of things and putting them together. And this vaccine, of course, is for the prevention of COVID-19 disease in people ages 16 years and older. Sarah Hudson, Management Analyst on our team, did some great work and estimation based on national and local surveys. And we think that this new development could potentially impact around 1,000 to 1,200 residents' attitude, perceptions, and potentially practices when it comes to vaccination uptake.
Nahad, is that 1,000 or 1,200 Deschutes County residents?
Yes, Commissioner. But of course, this is just an estimation based on survey results that we've had. And we try to make our decisions informed by data, but this is imperfect, of course, data. And we don't always know if intentions translate into practices. But we come, we try to prepare ourselves based on some assumptions, and the assumption is around 1,000. There have also been, Commissioners, several new developments around monoclonal antibody treatment, in particular availability of intravenous and subcutaneous therapy, which means perhaps more capacity to deal with more volume of patients, especially during this surge. What is important here for our community members to realize and know is that at the very beginning of their illness, right when they're tested positive or early in their symptoms, if they're meeting a few underlying conditions or are of certain age, then they should seek this therapy through consulting with their providers. A lot of information from reputable websites are available. We're also available to provide more information. But the timing of this therapy is really important, and I want to encourage our community members to be in touch with their primary care providers to find the right course of action. This is not only beneficial to them, but it also will diffuse some of the pressure on our medical system as well, which as you know, as of, you know, this morning, I believe, almost 90 people have been admitted. 90 COVID-positive patients have been admitted.
So Nahad, let's talk about that real quick. So monoclonal antibodies is an outpatient therapy available for people early diagnosed with COVID-19. It hasn't got complicated yet, so it's that moment right before it could get complicated. And you're referring to these, the diabetic, diabetes body mass index and these other items. So I'm just pointing out that it's kind of an individual's opportunity to understand, if they hear this message, that this could stop the COVID-19 from getting very serious, if there's action.
Brilliant summary, Commissioner. I have nothing to add to that. Well done. Yeah, exactly.
And Nahad, I've seen where it's recommended that you have this treatment within how many days of being diagnosed positive? I notice it's not on here, and I've seen it in several charts that it says you need to have this treatment done within seven days or what, 10 days? Do you have a recommendation there? And I believe they tested it at St. Charles, what, on 50 people? And of those 50, 49 of them did not end up in the hospital? Is that not what they were doing in the month of July?
If I might, if I may answer those two questions. So ideally, people should be treated within 48 to 72 hours, even 24 hours of when they're diagnosed, if they're in one of the high-risk categories. The other category of people that were helping stand up is people that are exposed, that are very high-risk at long-term care facilities prior to diagnosis. And the effectiveness is substantial, particularly in greatly reducing the likelihood of serious illness and death. So it's, so if someone's been vaccinated, it augments the amount of antibodies available beyond their normal immune response. If someone has not been vaccinated, it's, it's a proxy that may help substantially prevent the progression of disease.
Thanks, George. And Commissioner, I don't have any information, although George alluded to the effectiveness. I don't have any information from St. Charles in terms of the numbers. It seemed to be a reasonable commentary in terms of 49 out of 50, but the effectiveness, as George mentioned, is quite high. So I'd like to move to the next.
I'll just add one thing, Nahad. So the, the big change that's occurred in the last two months, so this is the, the primary one being used is the Regeneron, which is two, two different antibody monoclonal preparations. The big change that's happened last, since June, is that this is now permitted to be given by injection and four limbs, rather than the much more arduous intravenous infusion. So St. Charles is doing both now, and we're engaging other partners to try to stand this up as quickly as possible to reach the maximum number of people in the community. Thank you.
Thanks, George. So monoclonal antibody treatment, good. Ivermectin self-medication, bad. What we know is that there has been a recent elevation of poisonings in the U.S. by people trying to self-treat COVID-19 with the veterinary formulation of this anti-parasitic medication. The medicine which some people got via over-the-counter formulations has serious side effects, landing people in hospital emergency rooms. And some people unfortunately have been ingesting creams or lotion meant for animals. So the message for our community members, please avoid self-medicating in general, but in particular with this medication.
Nahad and Dr. Conway, I'm trying to understand the, the flow of misinformation that, that leads people to self-medicating in these ways. Do you, do you have any sense of how this information is, is spreading? Is it word of mouth? Is it social media? Is it, is it, you know, news agencies that are not being rigorous about the information that they're sharing? Like where is this information flowing?
So Commissioner, there are multiple layers to this. And in fact, misinformation or malinformation and disinformation is one of the key pillars of, behind this surge that we're experiencing right now. I have a neighbor, a new neighbor, relatively new neighbor, who actually works for Google Health. And we were chatting a bit about some of the ways in which information and misinformation is being disseminated and circulated. And very interesting. And a very interesting neighbor, in fact, and I'd like to learn more about this. What we can say is that there, the, the public and the audience of misinformation in general need to be, are already primed. There is some level of distrust in institutions, in science, in politics, in what have you, and they're primed for absorbing, and this is general, of course, for absorbing some of the information or misinformation. And the way misinformation right now is being driven, and this is by some reports coming out of the State Department, is in fact related to some mal-intent institutions even outside of our country, based in Russia, which are propagating some of this information in order to create, I mean, they have their own agenda, and I don't want to stipulate, it's out of my, frankly, lane of expertise, but it seems like they have their own agenda behind this. And that information, whether it's through social media, some news media, print, through social networks, are obviously reaching some audiences that are already primed to receive this information and digest it according to established beliefs that are in play.
If I may add, so the thing that's fueling the very recent, very sharp uptick is an increased national anxiety about Delta and a frankly inappropriate response of trying to self-medicate with this veterinary worm medicine, rather than the appropriate thing, if you're frightened about this, is to be vaccinated and to proceed that way. Failing that, the monoclonal antibodies we mentioned are a proven way to ameliorate this.
Yeah. Thank you. That's a great addition, George. So a final important development really was around, since the last presentation we gave, was around federal plans for booster shots, which is different than an earlier announcement for an additional or third dose for immunocompromised individuals. What we know is that although the three COVID-19 vaccines that we have in the U.S. continue to be highly effective, recent data however show that protection against asymptomatic mild and moderate disease may decrease over time. And this reduced, this reduced protection may be due to decreasing immunity over time, due to age and other factors, including the highly contagiousness of this Delta variant. So as of August eighteenth, there are now federal plans in play for rollout of booster shots, especially among those who are at higher risk or were vaccinated during the earlier phases of the vaccination rollout. There are some discussions around how long after the initial completion, for example, six months or eight months. Right now, what we know is eight months being mentioned, so this rollout would be sometime in end of September for shots given earlier in the year, January, February. And we're planning, internally, we're planning to absorb some of the initial high demand that we might see as a result of booster doses. And as I mentioned, this is really at the heels of two announcements we shared already. One was around immunocompromised people receiving an additional dose, and another was pregnant women now being encouraged to get vaccinated for COVID-19. The last update that I would like to share with our community members is that the Oregon Health Authority, the Public Health Division, has filed a number of temporary administrative rules in the past week, which include requiring masks to be worn in indoor and outdoor spaces, vaccination requirements to control COVID-19 for healthcare providers and healthcare staff, and vaccination requirements to control COVID-19 for schools and school-based programs.
Let's acknowledge that these temporary rules by the Oregon Health Authority are the items that are being discussed quite widely around the state, but this isn't by an emergency order by the governor, which is the last version of these types of situations. So this is all done under the Oregon Health Authority under temporary administrative rules.
Yes, and this last temporary administrative rule is especially important, given the contagiousness of Delta variants. This recent study from CDC showed that an unmasked, unvaccinated teacher infected half of her students and several contacts. So really, the take-home message here was around vaccination and wearing masks. This particular teacher was, would occasionally remove her masks to read to the students. And the attack rate for students sitting in the front, even though they were masked, but of course ineligible vaccination, was at eighty percent, and those sitting in the back were much lower. So it spoke to masking, it spoke to proximity, it spoke to ventilation, and of course vaccination overall. So with that, Commissioner, Commissioners, I would like to now shift us toward some of the local data, which I'm sure you've been waiting for. This slide shows our case counts by week ending eight or August twenty-eighth. Total count since March of last year is over fourteen thousand with unfortunately ninety-two deaths as of eight-thirty. Last week, we had one thousand fifty reported new cases, which is an increase of around ten percent since the previous week. So what is going on and what's driving these numbers? And there are really five pillars or drivers that I could think of here. One is that certainly this Delta variant, the transmissibility of it, and the characteristics of this virus, and the shorter incubation period that we're experiencing, and the severity that it's causing, right? So this, the characteristic of the virus has changed, and it's certainly behind some of this surge. So that's number one. Number two is that overall, our population is around sixty percent protected or vaccinated, right? Or let's say vaccinated, we don't know if protected, because we know there's a percentage of them, maybe around ten percent, that don't necessarily create immunogenicity to this vaccine and to the virus. So let's say fifty to sixty percent have been vaccinated slash immunized. However, we need to also account for the influx of tourists going in and out of our communities and their level of protection. So overall, population immunity is not at the levels where it can interrupt viral transmission. So that's number two. Number three, of course, is ongoing social interactions and movements indoors versus outdoors, and our behaviors when it comes to socializing, which facilitate the transmission of this virus. Number four is some of the suboptimal prevention measures that are in place and practices around it, right? So wearing masks, physical distance, hygiene, vaccination, of course. They're not necessarily optimal, and they contribute, that's another factor that contributes to the surge. And last but not least, it goes back to Commissioner Chang's earlier question, which is around misinformation or malinformation propagated internally within our borders and externally through some rogue entities outside, which are contributing to people's decision-making. So these are some of the main drivers, and I would have to say that I would like to think that we're reaching a peak and we're going to start going down. However, I'm not convinced, given with schools and universities returning, whether that's going to be the case or not. The interactions are most likely going to increase in indoor settings and with games and stadiums and what have you, even though they're outdoors still, it brings a whole lot of people together. So I'm not sure if with those two things panning out, if necessarily we're going to see a peak or we're going to see maybe a downward trend with another, maybe surge upwards as we saw in November and December following some holidays. This next slide, Commissioners, shows our weekly case rate by age group. The weekly case rate, as we see, has increased across most age groups last week and in previous weeks. So each bar indicates a week in our analysis, and each cohort of those four bars is really an age category. I realize that the colors may not be helpful in visualizing this, nevertheless, I hope my explanation helps. So that last bar is the last week of analysis that we're sharing with you, and as I mentioned, what you're, what we are observing is an increase across almost all age groups, and even if there is no increase, we're still seeing high numbers or high rates in all the age.
So on the seventy to seventy-nine, I believe that age group was like almost a hundred percent, or for a while you were reporting it as a hundred percent vaccinated. So by this chart, are we saying then that it's even people that are vaccinated are being tested positive?
Yeah, so that's, that's a great question, Commissioner. So certainly being vaccinated has, has huge benefits in terms of infectivity, hospitalization, and deaths. What we're seeing in those particular age groups, especially the, especially the older age groups, they were the ones who were vaccinated earlier in the vaccination rollout, and with waning immunity, that's why there are federal plans for booster doses, which should be rolled out in coming weeks. So that's one explanation behind some of the increasing cases that we're seeing amongst older age groups. However, I have to also mention that those breakthrough cases, as we're seeing from the hospital data, certainly have a different experience with the severity of the disease than otherwise.
So just to, Nahad, if you could stay with that slide for just a moment, just to elaborate, Commissioner, so the units in this is weekly case rates per ten thousand population. So this isn't a percentage. The salient point here is that the predominance of these infections are in young, young people, especially young adults and teens. Of course, the, the very youngest people, under twelve, don't have, aren't able to get a vaccine at this point. So I think the important message is to, is to promote vaccination in the, in the younger adults. The other thing is that we do know that there are breakthrough cases, and Delta is leading to more breakthrough cases. I think you'll see information about that later, which is people that have been vaccinated and develop infection. But we're continuing to see extremely low mortality and serious illness rates in those people that are showing those. Thank you.
Yeah, great additions, George, and, and the take-home message really around the young adults and vaccine, improving vaccination rates amongst them. So thank you for that. This next slide to mention that, and to really express that our county is not an anomaly by any means, the entire state and all the counties are in the high transmission space and were equally impacted, and that's why there are statewide concerns around the hospital admissions and hospital capacity, frankly. Now, one of the key indicators in containing this virus, Commissioners, is being able to, as you, and I'm sure you're well aware of this, is being able to investigate, call, contact patients within twenty-four hours, educate them, and try to then minimize the further transmission. This is more critical, especially since Delta has come into play, because it is so contagious with even shorter incubation period. So I have to say that despite the crazy hours, the obstacles, the evenings, the weekends that our team is putting in, despite all that, I would say that we're reaching two-thirds of our patients within twenty-four hours. And that's frankly remarkable, and I don't want to minimize the great effort being done. However, of course, we want to make sure that number is above ninety-five percent. What this shows really frankly is that the volume has surpassed our capacity within health services, and this means, this means unfortunately more cases, more hospitalization, and more deaths, unless the numbers are correct. Now, what we're doing about it is trying to hire additional ten to fifteen contractors and temporary staff to get on board and get trained. Right now, we have twenty-four contract staff working on containment efforts. Nine of them are, and twenty-four is not twenty-four full-time people, I want to make that point really clear, really nine of them are full-time, the rest of them are working partial hours depending on their life circumstances. We have created a team within health services, so we reached out to all the health, to all the service areas and created a backlog team, and this is around ten to fifteen people each day across the organization who are helping make backlog calls. And usually though, given again how much the volume is surpassing our capacity, we are, we're really unable to reach twenty to thirty percent, or makes twenty to thirty percent of those backlog calls within the twenty-four hours. Therefore, we have to resort to sending letters, which is not ideal, but we're still trying to make contact with our patients. I am hoping, and I sent an email in this regard, I'm hoping to tap into our entire county workforce for supplementing our backlog team and building capacity during this surge so that we can make more calls if we're not able to do full investigation on that. Last but not least, just to mention the scope of work right now, we are dealing with at least forty outbreaks that we know of. There are many more outbreaks out there, some of which we really don't know because we haven't been able to make all the calls, we haven't been able to make all the connections, people are not necessarily forthright with all the information, but in the last thirty days, there are at least forty outbreaks that we are aware of, and we're trying to contain.
Nahad, can I ask a couple of questions about those outbreaks?
Please.
The five in K to twelve schools, is that for summer school sessions or is that for that, you know, the handful of schools have already gone back to school and, you know, have had an outbreak immediately when, when kids have gone back?
Emily, can I? Yeah, I, I can jump in here a little bit. So it's kind of a combination. We've had, these count any outbreaks that are also for sports teams or anything that's affiliated with the school, so that would include summer school and sports teams for those schools that are, that are in session with those types of things. So like practices or any of those things or summer school.
Got it. Okay. And then the eight that are for businesses, do you, you know, I'm not asking to name names or anything, but can you, is there any, is there anything interesting or important to observe from the types of businesses, the types of establishments that are, that are having outbreaks, or is it just a whole variety of different kinds of businesses?
Yeah, so it is a whole variety of different types of businesses, and I would say that our criteria for starting outbreaks in businesses has also changed over time. So because we have this high volume and we're seeing lots of transmission amongst employees, just like Nahad mentioned with the, the study with the K-12 teacher, with the students that were in the front row, we're seeing the same thing. So even when there's some distancing and some masking, because people are around each other for eight hours plus per day, we, we are seeing lots of transmission in lots of different business settings, but just because our capacity is limited, we can't do a full investigation like we would like to on every single one. We do try to call every business where we know there was an exposure and explain to the business what they should be doing and how they can, you know, curb the impacts and hopefully minimize the, the impacts on their financial, you know, and health of their employees. But yeah, it's all different types of businesses. Basically, anywhere where people are near each other, which is almost every business, we can think of very few places where, you know, people are in offices by themselves with the doors closed. Pretty much everywhere else where you have any type of interactions with other people, we're seeing outbreaks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Emily.
Nahad, are we not asking for people when they're tested for their email? It seems like that would be an incredibly appropriate thing to do. You're saying that you actually have to mail them snail mail? Couldn't we add an email to that testing? Why hasn't that decision been made?
So I can maybe speak to that just a tiny bit. The number, so we get reports from all different types of entities that are doing testing, and not all of the reporting is the same. So it really depends on what we get in, and sometimes we do have emails and we can communicate that way, and other times we do not have that information. So it really depends on the provider, what they're providing, and they're very overwhelmed too. So we can say that the data that we're getting in, even with phone numbers and mailing addresses, isn't always the best, and so we're having to, to reach out and try to capture that information when it's missing, even just in the phone numbers and mailing addresses. And then sometimes the email is there, but not always. And then sometimes the email is there, but not always, so.
Thank you, thanks for that.
Yeah, and just really to reiterate here that mailing letters is really our last resort, right? It's only around ten to fifteen percent of the total volume of cases that come in through valiant efforts of our containment team plus the backlog team, which I'm hoping the county employees can also support us with that. We're reaching vast majority of people one way or another, right? So it's really the ten to fifteen percent that we are just desperate and something has to be done. Something's better than nothing, right? That's when, when we have to resort to that kind of archaic communication method.
But then you're saying that that could be up to a hundred and fifty if we had over a thousand cases and ten percent of that number? Anyway, that's, you know, gosh, you can mail a letter here and sometimes it takes a whole week for it to get back here.
Yeah, I, I can comment just a tiny bit on that. It is really frustrating and that's not what we want to do either. And we're really trying to make sure that there is no backlog because we know, especially with Delta, that it's really important to have that intervention as quickly as possible. So we are prioritizing certain cases and certain demographics and calling those people. I would also say that part of that letter mailing is for people that don't answer the phone or call us back. So we all know I get lots of junk calls too, or calls that I just don't answer because I don't see it on my phone. And so sometimes we, we mail those people letters too, even though we weren't able to talk to them on the phone. But we did attempt to reach out and left them a message, but we just don't hear back. And we don't want to wait, so we're just trying to at least get them the information somehow. I would also say that providers are also providing some of this information directly. And so this is a secondary way of, of providing that information and then doing the full case investigation as well. So for, you know, we're reaching out as best we can and our website has that information. So I would also say that sometimes people have already gotten, gotten the information, but not always. And we're screening for all of these other things that I think Nahad is going to be talking about a little bit more as far as wraparound services, et cetera.
So Emily, can you say, can you leave the message that you just tested positive for COVID? Can you leave that message without permission from the person to leave that message?
So we don't leave a message that says you've tested positive. We leave a message that we would like to talk to you about some information you have about your health. Would you please call us back? So we don't disclose any HIPAA information over the, over the phone with the message. But we do leave a message to ask for people to call us back.
Okay, thanks. I, that's what I thought you probably had to do. Thank you.
I'd just, Commissioners, I'd like to acknowledge the tremendous dedication, diligence and stamina of Ms. Freeland and her, or many colleagues that are working on case investigation and contact tracing. This is incredibly arduous with very high case numbers. They're doing a remarkable job of keeping up. And this is really an important form of follow-up and outreach and containment that also is materially important as far as having the potential to refer people that are at high risk for more definitive interim treatment with monoclonal antibodies as well. So, so I just want to be sure that people understand that this is an incredibly arduous, really Herculean effort. Many counties are suffering very seriously from fatigue and loss of staff. We're suffering from both of those, but people are being very diligent. So I just want to really acknowledge that these people, our colleagues, are working very, very hard, very long hours, and this is a, this is a really important contribution to our management of this problem.
George, thanks for also making that point around the referrals. That's really important as well. So we are containing the virus and we're leveraging that contact with our community members, that particular patient for other important follow-ups, including the antibody infusion that George mentioned just now. So it's, it's really, I'm, I'm really happy that you made that point clear, George. And, and I think it's an opportune time to, my colleague Cheryl is not available, is really to just give a very perfunctory update on what's happening with the ARPA funds that you kindly earmarked and allocated to us. Of the seven hundred thousand, I believe, out of the earmarked two million, we have already spent nearly four hundred thousand of that money through August twenty-two. So unfortunately, given what's transpiring in our, in our communities, we might be coming to you sooner rather than later for the next allotment of funds to sustain our efforts in this war against this virus. Commissioners, I already mentioned the gap that we're facing with temporary staffing capacity, contractors. But that's really already on top of our foundational capacity gap. We have ten key foundational positions related to COVID one way or another, which are remaining vacant. And, and of course, I have these listed, the health officer, emergency preparedness coordinator. We do have someone in that position, but they're detailed to the response, which means that when we had the excessive heat, the fire, the smoke happening, unfortunately, we didn't have the capacity to deal with those multiple fires at the same time. Our communicable disease coordinator, Jill Johnson, who left, who resigned, who retired, sorry, has, that position's been vacant for three months. We have a public health nurse who recently resigned. And I'd like to acknowledge her, in particular Kathy Kirk, who's been our testing coordinator and just an awesome human being, old school mentality with the public health nurse out there with her sleeves rolled up and working hard without trying to seek any attention or credit for her amazing work. And our administrative assistant, Lindsay Seibel, recently also was promoted to another position outside of COVID. So that position remains vacant. But really, I want to draw your kind attention to five ICS positions. These are positions in, back in March, were approved by your good selves for the incident command structure. And they were really, they were scheduled to end in December twenty-twenty-one. And what we have found is that it's, uh, it's difficult to recruit public health personnel to begin with, but it's even much harder to recruit for a position that's going to end in December in a few months. So I'm bringing this up right now because next week I'll be coming to your good selves to ask for your kind approval to extend those positions for a twelve-month duration. And we have received some funding from OHA and we're able to move some funding around to accommodate that. So it's not going to require additional funds necessarily outside of what we have already received. So that's just planting the seeds for next week's conversation. Commissioners, as you're kindly, as you can kindly imagine, there is a downstream effect with the surging case numbers. One of the residual impacts is increasing volume of wraparound services. We have had to increase our staffing capacity to also support over four hundred referrals and those who need services through August twenty-first, uh, first. So this is only for three-fourth of the month of August. We have over four hundred referrals and, and, and community members we are trying to support. Now, wraparound services for those who may not be aware include food, food deliveries, cleaning and medical supplies, temporary motel homes, utility as payment support. And, and frankly, these are not just altruistic social services. They are in fact a key part of our containment strategy in that we want people to stay home for either isolation or quarantine in order to curb the spread of this virus. So the choice of whether to stay home from work is really a difficult one for many of our hardworking residents in Deshute County, who would unfortunately face missing out on a paycheck. So these services help mitigate a portion or a part of that income loss and provide some support so their decision in staying home and isolating or quarantining can be easier. This next slide shows our testing volume, so shifting a bit towards some of the activities in our community. The testing volume for the week ending August twenty-eighth, which was around four hundred thirty tests per ten thousand population, up slightly maybe around seven or eight percent since the previous week. The weekly percent positivity is at nearly fourteen percent. So what we want to see is really, given the large volume of testing, what we want to see is around five to eight percent testing positivity because that would be an indication that we're seeing a reduction in new cases. But what we're seeing instead is testing volume going up, which is good or neutral because cases are up, contacts are up, but positivity is also up at nearly fourteen percent. So that's not really necessarily positive news. This slide is probably the most important indicator and one that I've been referring to as our red line from the beginning of this pandemic. The, I think you're well aware of what's happening in our medical system and the valiant efforts of our nurses and doctors and medical personnel in, in helping with patients who are admitted due to COVID. As of this morning, we had eighty-nine admissions, fifty-three of whom are Deshute County residents, twelve people in ICU and ten on ventilators. Average admissions have increased this past week compared to previous weeks. This, uh, this, this week alone since Sunday, we're slightly up at seventy-six daily average admissions compared to last week of seventy-three. Ever hospitalized, Commissioner, there, I know this is an important indicator for you. Ever hospitalized stands at eight hundred and fourteen. And again, my heart goes out to Dr. Epsilon and his team and the, the medical personnel. And I was talking with, with Commissioner Debone yesterday. It's not like other diseases and other conditions and illnesses are kind of like, hey, you know, let's take a break while we're dealing with COVID. All of those other things that normally happen based on our population health, like heart attacks, like strokes, like cancer treatment, they're still happening. And this is really on top of everything else that's going on. And our medical teams are trying to balance based on urgent and priority cases at this point.
Nahad, yesterday the hospital actually changed their reporting. They're actually letting us know how many people are fully vaccinated in the hospital. And I do think that's an, an important fact to add to their reporting. So many people that are completely vaccinated don't understand that there's a very slight risk, but there is a risk that they could end up in the hospital per the numbers. I believe it's like, you know, seven, thirteen percent, something like, no, seventeen percent. Yeah, anyway, so that was a really good addition to the way they are giving the information out to the public and I thank them for that.
Thank you for mentioning that. I might have that particular graphic here as well, if that's what you're referring to, Commissioner. It's an important indicator to share as well. I'm vaccinated and I'm relatively young and with no underlying conditions, but I'm wearing a mask because this virus is, I was thinking through like how to describe it. It's not like bouncing a basketball where you know when you bounce it, it's going to come back up straight. This is more like football. When it bounces, you never know which way it's going to go. And even if I'm protected and even if I know the odds are in my favor if I'm exposed to this virus, I'm not prepared to take those odds right now. And I'm still wearing a mask, additional layer. I'm still physically distancing and I'm trying to avoid indoors with a bunch of people versus being outdoors. So that's, that's the approach I'm taking, that's the approach my family's taking. And I'm hoping our community members, even if they're vaccinated, that's their thinking through those nuances. So to your point, vast majority of hospital admissions are unvaccinated, dealing with longer admission time and more severe disease here as well. So that's around eighty-eight percent being unvaccinated. And this next slide is, is, is pretty much a repetition of the previous slide, but really what I wanted to highlight here is that also vast majority of the admissions are under sixteen, which is not necessarily what we were observing at the beginning of this pandemic, as you might realize. However, given the high protection rate we see amongst the older population despite the breakthrough cases, the admissions at this point have shifted to unvaccinated, younger population, younger than sixty. And, and I think part of the story here that we've been alluding to is the contagiousness of this Delta variant. It has a shorter reproduction number or a less number compared to the original virus, which was on average between two to three, whereas now we're seeing the R-nuts being between five and eight. And that speaks to the contagiousness. Nevertheless, before I give the floor to my colleague Emily, vaccines, the vaccines that we have now are still working. Now that's not to say that the next variant, whether it's Epsilon or Lambda or whatever it might be, that the vaccines are going to be as effective towards protecting us against those particular variants. But for now, in, the vaccines are holding their ground against this Delta. And the sooner we can increase the population immunity, the better chance we have frankly in terms of slowing down the evolution of this virus and the much perhaps dire variants that might evolve down the line. So that, this, this slide is just to give us a sense of the protection that we can get through vaccination, which is much better protection against infectivity, hospitalization and death, but it's not completely foreproved. And that's why we need to make sure that we are taking on other preventive measures. So speaking of vaccination, Emily, I can help you with the slides if you want to proceed.
Thank you, Nahad. So I'm just going to go over a little bit about where we are as far as vaccination in Deshute County. And as we've seen by the slides and the numbers of our cases, it's really important, just as important now as much as it was back in January, to really encourage and continue to encourage those who are not vaccinated to, to reach out and get their vaccination. So we can see here that of our population that's eighteen and older, we have about seventy-five percent of those people are in series as far as vaccination. But remembering that that is the eighteen and older population. So under eighteen, we have a lot of people that are not vaccinated, those are lower rates. And we have a lot of people that are under twelve that are not eligible. So there's lots of potential for spread in our communities. Side please. So this is the vaccination rate by age group. So, you know, we know only twelve to seventeen for those younger people are allowed to be vaccinated, under twelve that those have not been approved yet. So about half of our twelve to seventeen-year-olds are vaccinated at this point. And as we go back into school, we know that this is going to be a significant, you know, effect of the virus moving throughout those populations, as well as who has to go ahead and quarantine and who is not. So if you're fully vaccinated at this point and you're exposed, quarantine is not required. And those people, and we're seeing this even in those outbreaks that we mentioned before as far as the sports teams and who's allowed to come back and practice and those who are not when, when they're exposed in, in those different scenarios. So the vaccination rate kind of goes up stepwise, up to like we mentioned before, the seventy to seventy-nine-year-olds are pretty much fully vaccinated in that age demographic. And this is kind of inverse to what we see as far as those case rates. So lower case rates in those higher vaccinated populations. Although we are seeing those increases like Nahad mentioned that are potentially due to waning immunity over time, especially with, with some of those older people whose immune systems behave a little bit differently than younger people. And that looks like maybe Dr. Conley had something to add?
I'm sorry, no. I unwittingly unmuted, forgive me.
Okay, no worries. So it is our turn. We really encourage everyone to go out and got, get the shot. So we have pop-up clinics that are available. You can get it through pharmacies and primary care clinics. Earlier this week, I did a little exercise just to kind of determine how difficult it had been to, to, you know, schedule a vaccine. And when I looked at just three different pharmacies in our community, I saw over hundreds of open appointment slots in the next couple of days. So if you want to get the shot, it is available and it is easy to make those appointments. So if you want to get the shot, it is available and it is easy to make those appointments at our local pharmacies, or if you'd like to talk to your primary care doctor, or come to one of our pop-up clinics, those are walk-in clinics and those are available. So our centraloregoncovidvaccine.com is still the best place to go and get the information about where you can get the vaccine. So you can see all these little boxes here, and if you're a patient or not, you can click on those and you'll be able to see all the different options for vaccination. So in this distributed model, we really hope that people are aware, you know, there's not just one place, there is many, many places in every single community. So in Bend, there's options, and Redmond, Sisters, and Lapine, as well as Sun River. So we want to make sure that people are able to get the vaccine in their community wherever that happens to be. Next slide. So we really want to think about removing the barriers to vaccination. We know that, you know, no one's coming to your house to help get you vaccinated for the most part, except in very specific circumstances. So we're trying to help remove those barriers. There is no cost for vaccine or administration if you come to one of our pop-ups. There's minimal wait time, and there are standing clinical locations, so every week in the same place at the same time. If you miss it one week, it'll be there the next week. We also make sure that, you know, people are aware, even if you aren't really sure about getting the vaccination and you want to talk to someone, all of our pop-ups are staffed with healthcare workers who can, who can provide education and just talk through the situation with you if you're, if you're unsure about whether you should get it or what the risk factors are for your specific circumstances. We're willing to do that. Show up and chat with us, that's why we're there. Next slide. So as you can see here, this has been, people are often wondering how many of the vaccines are given by health services versus those other providers in our community, so the pharmacies and the clinics. As you can see here, the number is relatively small, and that's what we want with this kind of model of a distributive model. Early on, when we had the mass vaccination clinic, this would be, you know, 100% blue because we were with St. Charles pretty much the only provider. But now we are moving in the week of August 22nd through 28th, you can see we're, you know, a very small percentage. We also see over time in the last few weeks, probably fueled by a few different things, concerns over Delta variant, those third doses for immunocompromised individuals, and the, also like Nahad mentioned, the full approval for the Pfizer vaccine from the EUA status has, has driven those numbers up somewhat. So for the month of August, which we are done with now, and we're into September, but we had vaccine events in all communities. So like I mentioned, in Sisters, we have Mondays from 2 to 4 at the Firehouse. We added a new evening clinic in Bend from 5 to 7, so hopefully opening up that when people are getting off work, that they have the availability to pop in and get that. And then at the downtown library during the day. And then Redmond on Thursdays at the Redmond Library, and then Lapine at the Lapine Chamber. So we've changed things around just a little bit for the month of September, if we want to go to the next slide. We added, we moved the location at Redmond to the City Hall, so we can accommodate more people moving through that location than at the library. And we've also moved our location in Lapine to the library, again, so we don't have to be outside for those events. So please come visit us, like I said, even if you're just curious and want to talk to someone, these are the places you can go and we will be there. Next slide, please. So the vaccine team is not only doing those standing pop-up clinics, we also go and do vaccinations at the county jail. We are serving long-term care facilities, staff, and residents with onsite vaccinations there. We do, like I mentioned before, you know, the very few places where there's homebound citizens will go and help those people who will be vaccinated. Best Care, which is an alcohol and drug residential treatment center, we go and vaccinate folks there, and Shepherd's House. So we are reaching out, and in addition to all of these standing clinics and open to the public type of situations, we're trying to make sure that the highest risk in those people that need it the most, we are reaching out to them for direct vaccination in these circumstances. Next slide, please. So, you know, help with questions, we do have frequently asked questions, and our website is updated frequently. If you go to this, you can email healthservices@dushuts.org, and someone will get back to you right away. And then we do have the hotline, so this is a vaccine hotline, but it also, they handle calls just about COVID in general, and that's available from Monday through Friday from nine to five. And you can ask any type of COVID questions, and I know all of my teams get questions from the vaccine hotline. If they're not able to answer those questions, they'll, they'll pass those on to the rest of the team, and we'll make sure that you get the answers that you need. So we really encourage people, if you're diagnosed or you think you've had a close contact and you're not sure, you can call that number as well and we can help connect you. Like Nahad said, with the volume of tests that we have, and not getting to everybody within that 24 hours, we certainly do get questions and about how to handle your situation. We would encourage you, if you haven't gotten a call, you can reach out if you're not sure what you should be doing, and we can help walk you through that, either through the hotline or other staff members can call back.
So Emily, if I may just reiterate a point you made earlier, because it's important for our community members to start planning around, especially the booster doses, the imminent booster doses coming up. Under the leadership of Dr. Conway and of course guidance from the commission, we've always tried to make rational decisions and think about cost benefit analysis in rolling out any activities. It made sense early on for health services in partnership with our St. Charles colleagues and thousands of other, or hundreds of other volunteers and entities to set up events such as the ones we saw at the fairgrounds to vaccinate thousands of our community members. Moving forward, as we've done in the past, we are looking for community solutions to rolling out the next phase of the vaccination around boosters or additional doses, which are not just going to be probably for this fall, most likely in 12 months, there'll be another round of boosters or equivalents of it. So really, a sustainable platform is based on, based on something that the entire community is, is part of. And we are, we have great capacity in our pharmacies, in our primary care facilities, and our role is most likely going to be in filling the gaps and serving the most marginalized groups, whether they're based in rural settings, or facing disability, or some other factors that really there is no private solution for it. And our job is really to then fill the gap in that regard.
Okay, thank you so much. This is our bi-weekly COVID update. Questions?
Oh, I have a question, Nahad. I'm wondering, what is the capacity of the outpatient therapy clinics? Is there a daily capacity? And when could more people receive that treatment? Because clearly, it seems like it's fairly successful, and do you know, I know that they were doing it in Redmond, they're doing it here in Bend, I know some other clinics were hoping to add that soon, maybe like the first of October or something. Do you, do you have any idea? I mean, because you look at this, and I know I'd heard that over 50% of the people who had died were obese, not really seeing that information in this chart today, but what is it, how many people could get this treatment? And is there any way to expand that? I realize that our, you know, the hospital is really at a straining point with the 89 patients, but if we could get more people this therapy, I, I do believe it's very, very important.
Yes, Commissioner, we had a, we've been working with OHA the last more than two weeks, trying to figure out the supply chain and assist St. Charles. Working with St. Charles, we had a lengthy discussion on Friday at our community testing and vaccination work group. There are multiple other community providers that are doing their best to stand up this therapy, hopefully within the next two weeks. We're also doing active outreach to, among other things, urgent care centers to try to promote the availability of the monoclonal antibodies there. The, there is a benefit to having the subcutaneous or injection mode and four limbs versus the IV infusion, but the impediment for many providers is the wait time of an hour post, post-injection, so we're trying our best to work around that as well. The supply chain is actually reasonably good. St. Charles is stepping up there, their both their infusions and their subcutaneous administration, and the FQHCs are moving in that direction very rapidly as well.
Thank you, that's like the best news. Thank you so much.
Is there a way to enumerate that?
I couldn't hear you, Nahad, sorry.
Commissioner Dare, I think was, was asking more around sort of numbers. Is there a way at this point to enumerate the capacity?
No, no, there's, there's some elasticity. Actually, I was, I was talking to Megan Hayes late yesterday, the director of largest F3C Mosaic Medical about that, as well as what we could do to help expedite it. The, the supply chain is adequate right now to have quite a few other providers adding this, but it takes time to set this up, to staff it, properly supervise, educate people. But we're working very, very quickly to do that. We have another meeting this Friday with the same, the same group, and in the interim, it's probably fair to say that I'm twisting some arms trying to get, trying to get additional entities to participate. Certainly, Commissioner, is anything you can do to spread the word? And I appreciate it, you're asking about this now, I think over two weeks ago. Commissioner Dare would certainly be appreciated.
I, yeah, that's really good news to know that we have adequate supply. So thank you for that, and hopefully more in the community can step up, because if we have over 1,000 positives, definitely don't want them ending up in the hospital if at all possible.
I had a couple of questions. My, my first question was, when are we going to have our discussion about additional allocation of ARPA funds or the check-in on, on the ARPA funds? And I'm, I'm asking just because this, it's the capacity that this, these ARPA funds are creating are so important during this, this surge of COVID that we're in the middle of right now. I mean, there's, there is so much COVID in, you know, present in the community right now that every person who's doing case investigation, every person who's doing vaccine, vaccination promotion, every person who's doing business assistance is, is helping us while we're kind of awash in COVID to contain, you know, contain the damage, to, to hopefully bring our, our case numbers next week and the next week down, while we're approaching the peak of this surge. So I, I mean, I, I am very cognizant that health services needs that predictability in resources to be able to build and maintain the human resource capacity that is required to help us get, get this under control. I mean, and, and I wanted to circle back to the, the discussion of, the discussion with Emily about, you know, the, the incredible work that the case investigators are doing right now. I mean, that's a perfect example to me of, you know, of how a little bit of investment and a little bit of predictability and capacity can help us, you know, increase that, that percentage from two-thirds contacted within 24 hours to hopefully something more like 90%, which allows us to get more people to stay home and not expose other people. So is that, will that be Wednesday, or will that be Monday?
So Commissioner, thank you first of all to all of you for the financial support through ARPA funds for approving that and making those funds available. Our system would have collapsed if we didn't have those funds. We were able to maintain some baseline capacity based on some scenarios that we had considered, but we never considered this scenario within right now, frankly, I don't think anyone did. And that's why we're trying to use those funds to add additional capacity with 10 to 15 temporary staff. So far, we have spent, as of, I think, August 22nd, we've spent nearly 380,000 of the 700,000. We're, we like to know maybe perhaps at what, like, at which point it makes sense? Is it at the 80% expenditure rate or 90% that we should come back? I think we are prepared to come back frankly, mid to end of September and provide ongoing transparency around the expenditure and add a few nuances to some of our requests. There are some other gaps that we're facing, because as we mentioned earlier, it's not just that cases go up and we try to contain it, there's a residual impact, there's an increasing volume of background services that right now is unaccounted for, and we're robbing Peter to pay Paul. So we probably need to tap into some of these ARPA funds or other funds that you stipulate for us to support the ongoing background services as well. So Commissioner Chang, perhaps more direct answer to your question. I think we would be able to come mid-September to end of September with more accurate figures and more direct perhaps discussion around the asks. Next week in particular, we're planning to come to seek your approval to extend some of those foundational capacity positions, which are required for actually managing some of these 50, 60 temporary contractors that we have onboard. We have 10 right now vacant, but five of those positions are critical in terms of a direct COVID response.
Okay, thank you. Yeah.
Okay, great update today. As I say, the, we want to thank all the folks in our health staff working hard, but also the health system itself, St. Charles, all the medical providers, working hard at this time of a spike in the numbers that sure wasn't even expected at the end of the summer. So we'll see what the future brings also.
It makes last summer look flat, totally. I mean, when you compare last summer's number up till like the first of October, it's unbelievable, the difference.
Before we leave this topic, I wanted to just briefly return again to the concept of the county providing incentives to employees to get vaccinated voluntary, not a mandate, but a voluntary incentive. You, you all may recall, last week I asked Human Resources to pull some numbers together for me to make the case, you know, in my mind, we're, we're basically making the case to the taxpayers for why it makes financial sense for an employer to provide vaccine incentives. We, my impression is we have pretty good vaccination rates within, within the county staff, but not 100%. And each person who is unvaccinated, in my mind, represents a risk, a financial risk for the county. Not only if they get sick and they need to be away from the office for a week, are we losing out on the productivity of that worker? Or, or tapping someone else and taking them away from their job in order to, to cover those responsibilities? But Dushuts County is self-insured, and the costs for a COVID hospitalization are, are extraordinary. So the, the numbers that, that HR was able to assemble for me indicate that, or suggest that, or find that one COVID-19 hospitalization of an employee might cost $35,000 to $45,000 before the, the employee's co-pay is, is taken out there. So that's the gross, the gross cost, and then the, the employee would have a certain amount of co-pay in that. But our, 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 our health trust fund would cover the rest, $35,000 to $45,000 for a COVID hospitalization. If that employee ended up in the ICU or on a ventilator, the cost would be something closer to $95,000 to $125,000. And those, those hospital stays, those ICU stays are largely proven. those ICU stays are largely preventable through vaccination. And I believe that making investments in incentives for employees to get vaccinated are financially justified from a business perspective for the county as an employer. We've seen that the health assessments that we ask county employees to voluntarily sign up for, we give them, the incentive we give them to do that is we cover their health insurance premium co-pay for a month. That costs us $90. And yet, we've seen a tremendous response from, from county employees to do the health assessment. You know, it's only a $90 incentive. It's not huge. But it's meaningful to the employees, and it results in healthcare cost savings for us as an employer. So I see vaccination in a very similar light. This is something that could help us run in a more business-like fashion, save, you know, reduce the risk or the exposure of our taxpayers to COVID-related costs if employees get, are infected with COVID. So I'd like to just kind of put those numbers out there. Happy, I'd be happy to discuss that idea further today or at a future board meeting.
So last week, you brought this concept up for the county, plus private businesses. There was a response from the community. A lot of email came back in saying, you know, this is, this is not okay, the people that responded.
The people who responded, the people who responded accused me of proposing a mandate, which was a gross misrepresentation of my proposal.
Well, and that's my point. I mean, if people are notified, if people are paying attention, if they wanted to get a vaccine, they would have by now. There's a subset of the population that are choosing not to. And to by, by ratcheting up incentives until they get a vaccine, what's the difference from that and a mandate? Obviously, there's a black and white difference from a mandate choice to this incentivized system you're talking about. But that's just ratcheting up incentives until people make that choice. So, yeah, it's a choice.
It is not a mandate. There is still every, every choice, every choice available if you provide an incentive. In fact, if you provide incentives, there are more choices available. So to, to, to
I believe our
To fight incentivization on the basis of choice, on the basis of, you know, kind of a perceived impingement on people's freedom is ridiculous.
I personally know people that have had horrible, horrible reactions to flu shots. They had one flu shot, had a terrible reaction. They had the second flu shot, and they had a worse reaction. And to those people, every, your health is your personal business. And, you know, if, I don't want someone in the county that has that type of a medical history to think that they have to get it. I believe the health department, I heard on the radio today, was offering $50 Visa cards to people that were vaccinated. Is that, is that up today, Emily? I mean, that's what it was saying on KBND on the way to town. So there are incentives out there for people if they, they haven't been vaccinated. But I do believe that our employees, all 1,100 of them, are incredibly aware of COVID. A lot of them volunteered in the vaccination center. And I, you know, I do believe that they have made that choice. And everyone knows their personal history and how they feel about having this vaccine. So it's, it's a choice.
Anyone who is more concerned about the risks of the vaccine to them than they are concerned about the risks of not being vaccinated has the choice not to get vaccinated. Employers offer employees incentives to get the flu shot, which is less effective than the COVID vaccine. Employers offer employees incentives not to smoke. And those employees, they don't get 100% response on those. There are employees who choose not to take those incentives because they are attached to smoking or because they don't want the flu vaccine. And, but there are, there are employees who are motivated by that little additional vaccination because it comes on top of other motivations, a realization that the Delta variant is far more contagious than previous variants of COVID. That hasn't convinced hundreds of thousands of more people across the country to get, to get vaccinated. A realization that, oh, the FDA actually has formally, fully approved this vaccine and believes it's 100% safe, or the benefits so outweigh the risks that, that they want to approve it. That convinced, that convinces another, you know, 1% or 2% of the people who are unvaccinated to say, oh, well, now I'm more likely to get vaccinated. These factors combine to motivate someone to get off the couch and go and get the vaccine. And we should be doing everything we can to improve the vaccination rates in our community to help contain COVID because it is having devastating impacts on our healthcare system, our populations. And, you know, as we see the Delta variant peak out, it will probably have very significant impacts on businesses, on school openings. It is, yeah, yeah. I mean, short of imposing a mandate, this is, this should be a very simple choice.
Go as far as you can.
This should be a very simple choice.
It is a simple choice, and choices have been made. We're a year and a half into it. So could, could you provide your email address for us, please?
Absolutely. My email address is phil.chang@deschutes.org.
C-H-A-N-G, so there's no E on the end of it.
No E. And just to emphasize again to anyone who's listening, this is an incentive for employees who have 100% choice in whether they get vaccinated or not. It's just one additional factor to consider if this, if this proposal were to move forward.
So this conversation last week triggered an email response. There was 570 angry people saying this is not appropriate.
There are 570 people accusing me of wanting to mandate vaccinations for everyone. And that is not what I would propose then, and it is not what I am proposing now. It is a misrepresentation of my words.
So as I say, I mean, when I, okay. No need to discuss any further. Thank you very much for sharing. At this time, I'm, I'm kind of thinking that maybe we'll slip an item or maybe the two items, recreational vehicle park expansion and SB 391, to after lunch. We have a little bit of stuff to do before that. So then we can take a break and kind of come back refreshed. So at this time, though, let's get back, if that's supported by the board. I don't know. I guess I'm thinking if we meet from
That's fine.
1:00 to 2:00, or 2:30 or whatever, we'll be done. Okay. So at this time, let's get back to item number 19 and wind down for the morning. So as I say, we'll move items 21, 22 to the afternoon. So item number 19 is a public hearing in consideration of approving annexation to the Cloverdale Rural Fire Protection District.
Yes, Commissioners, before you is Order 2021-037, which would approve an annexation into the Cloverdale Rural Fire Protection District. The chief petitioners are Jim Crow and Caroline Stratton. They filed a petition to annex property into that district. The district has approved the petition. The assessor's office and the county clerk have certified that the petition is appropriate, and community development has reviewed it for consistency with the county's comprehensive plan. There's no objection to date from anybody. This would be the time to hold open a public hearing, receive any public input, close the hearing, and take action on the order.
So this is one petition for two parcels?
Yes.
Just making sure real clear here. Okay. So there's two, two pieces of land being proposed to, being annexed into this fire protection district. At this time, we'll open the public hearing on this matter. And I did see a community member that might have been here for this item and had to leave. So is there anybody requesting to speak on this proposed order? Seeing no one in the room, is there anybody on Zoom? Or any telephone calls, telephone numbers? Okay, seeing none. At this time, we'll close the public hearing on this matter. And deliberation. Any, any other?
No, this is, I've told you folks before, this is kind of an anomaly in state statute that this comes before the county governing body. There's been some talks in, in the past of maybe removing this from the, being something that would come across your, your plate. But for the time being, it still comes before the county board of commissioners. Obviously, the, the district at issue has reviewed it and approved and is willing to have these folks come in. The folks want to come in. And as I said, the assessor, the clerk, and the community development have all indicated that it's appropriate, meets those requirements. So this is more of a formality than, than a whole lot of weighing of any particular factors.
Is there any other discussion or questions?
I was curious, I couldn't gather from the staff report whether this, this property was already within the district boundary and just hadn't been picked up before, or whether this was sort of an expansion of the district.
It would be an expansion of the boundary. It's annexing into the, into the boundary. So the boundary, and that's one of the reasons why all this paperwork then goes to the state department of revenue, goes to the secretary of state's office. Assessor works the new district maps, which would then, you know, fit into the assessment in future tax years. And, yeah, that's, that's the process for this.
So the only other dynamic would be this is a fire, a fire protection district, rural fire protection district for structural fire coverage, and it's not an ambulance service that the Cloverdale provides. So there's, I don't know who's
That's correct. And it's typically motivated by loans. If you want to build, oftentimes your lender's not going to loan you money to build without
So it's simple structural protection.
Right.
And I'm always hoping that they will be from McKenzie Canyon because that's a neighborhood by me, and they don't have the protection. And I, I'm hoping that some of those neighbors will add that at some point in time. The Grand View Fire was a bit, you know, in our neighborhood, and they were, fortunately, they were, you know, it didn't spread across Holmes Road, but still, it's, you know. So this is always a good thing, I think.
Okay, well, is there a motion?
I still move order, approval of Order Number 2021-037.
Second.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Adair?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. So as I say, let's move the last two items to after lunch. I think there is an executive session today also, and we'll, we'll be fresh back for that. One other item, the Ed Ray Building over at OSU Cascade was open today about 11 o'clock, so we just couldn't be there today. But another facility at the OSU Cascade's campus. Congratulations on being able to get that open. And it's exciting to see the, kind of the, the campus plan unfold over the years. With that, we'll recess for lunch.
1:00?
For 1:00. Yeah, 1:00, please start. Uh, for 1:00, yeah, 1:00 please start.
Okay, so we're back from our lunch break. This is our September 1st board meeting. Agenda item number 21, recreational vehicle park expansion slash assessment. Thank you very much, Peter, for joining us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Peter Gatawski, Planning Manager. Just to provide some context for anyone who's listening online or watching online. Earlier in the spring, the Board of County Commissioners requested information regarding the land use entitlement or the land use permit process for citing campgrounds, RV parks, and manufactured home parks in rural Deschutes County. Today, this discussion is focusing on recreational vehicle park expansion opportunities. And as noted in the memo, and I do pause to acknowledge that may not be giving the board the news or the input or the assessment that you might want, but in reviewing Oregon case law, specifically the Land Use Board of Appeals, or LUBA, decisions as it pertains to RV parks, that analysis showed that the establishment of new RV parks is likely to be considered as an urban use. And so what does that mean? If it's an urban use that's being contemplated in rural Deschutes County, it requires what's called an exception to statewide Goal 14, which relates to urbanization. And I guess I should back up one step in that it's important to remind everybody, and the board is certainly aware of this, that the seven RV parks that exist in Deschutes County were created well over 40 years ago before we had a state land use system. And so the case law that I've cited in the memorandum, again, offers a cautionary note in terms of if RV parks were to be expanded, it could be interpreted as an urban use and focus heightened attention on the existing RV operation. The two other points I'll make, and then certainly look for input from the Board of County Commissioners, is that there are other obligations that are attributable to expanding an RV park. And I worked with Todd Cleveland, our Environmental Soils Manager, to identify or really acknowledge that any RV park expansion is going to require a permit from the Oregon Department of Environmental Quality in what is called as a water pollution facility, WPCF, Water Pollution Control Facility Permit, to expand those existing onsite wastewater treatment systems. And for some of those areas that have a shallow groundwater, or they're located in a shallow portion of the aquifer, and this would be in southern Deschutes County, Todd let me know that as part of that permitting process, of that application process, that those representatives would have to submit a hydrologic report with it to ensure that the groundwater is being addressed. And when you couple those obligations with the requirements for land use entitlements, and as you may recall, when we had the conversation earlier this year, when you expand an RV park, you have to bring the code requires bringing the whole RV park into code. And many of these RV parks, you know, likely don't have their aisle width for emergency vehicles may not be as wide as the code requires them today, or their water pressure may not be as high as it needs to be today. And the code requires RV parks, again, when they expand, to bring the existing park into compliance. And so when you factor in the land use entitlements, the infrastructure improvements, coupled with the wastewater permit system coming through the Oregon Department of Environmental Quality, staff is just obligated to let you know that you're talking about some significant costs upfront as part of that process. And my final comment, maybe it's a suggestion, a diplomatic suggestion to the board for consideration, is as you think about engaging our legislative delegation into 2022 or for the regular session in 2023, I made this point earlier, is that when you look at the modifications that have been made to allow temporary housing for those that have been displaced by natural hazards or by a natural hazard like wildfires in southern Oregon, the state modified state law to allow for some temporary housing opportunities. My point being is that it may be worth, I think the board may want to have a conversation at some later date to think about engaging the legislative delegation, our central Oregon legislative delegation, to think about modifying state law to allow RV park expansions in rural areas where they don't require a Goal 14 exception. That's really a difficult, difficult set of criteria to overcome. Basically, it requires demonstrating why this use can't be served in an urban area. And it's hard, that'll be, you know, difficult to demonstrate when you have the case law that I mentioned or I cited in the memorandum. So, again, I recognize this probably wasn't what the board was expecting from staff in terms of coming back and really giving you an opportunities analysis for these types of uses, but it's problematic for the reasons that I've just discussed. And staff is here to certainly answer any questions or provide additional comments you may have on this particular topic.
Well, there you go, state land use. Put this in a box. What about emergency citing of homeless camp in the rural? I guess, you know, that's kind of the complement to this. Do we have that opportunity? I don't have a feel for it now.
Commissioners, Nick Lealack, it exists now based on rules that the Land Conservation and Development Commission adopted last year, earlier this year, permanently, permanent rules earlier this year for temporary sheltering for people displaced by wildfires. It does not exist for people displaced by this housing crisis. And so one of the other opportunities, in addition to engaging the legislative delegation, would be for our county to send to the Land Conservation and Development Commission a letter requesting rulemaking be included on the biennial policy agenda. The commission is going to discuss later this month the first draft of the policy agenda, and then will conduct a public hearing on the policy agenda in November. And so that could be an opportunity to get this issue before the commission, of which full disclosure, I sit on separately. But that could be an opportunity to raise this issue with the full Land Conservation and Development Commission, is to potentially address at least temporary rules to allow this, at least for a period of time, similar to those displaced by wildfires.
And there was another bill, and I'm pulling it up now, that was passed this year.
House Bill 2006.
Yeah.
Was it 2006? I mean, the number?
HB 2006.
Oh, House Bill 2006.
Yes.
Is that what, yeah, I'm just, mixed memory is, yeah, he's exact, never doubt. It is, yeah, House Bill 2006. It is, yeah, House Bill 2006 that related to emergency shelters. So that was captured in the memorandum that I wrote for your consideration back in July. So there is a provision, and it has some stipulations about, you know, qualifying entities that can manage those emergency shelters. So, yes, thank you for remembering that citation, and that is another possibility for consideration, for sure.
And so what does that look like? Do we invite our couple of representatives and Senator Knopf to, you know, have a brainstorming session with us on these issues, or, you know, kind of, you know, how do we start that legislative discussion?
That's a good question. I would look to Nick or to Tom, who, you know, there's, I think there's a conversation that happens when the session is forthcoming to begin prioritizing, identifying items that are of the board's interest, even outside of land use, fleshing them out, identifying priority issues. And then, I believe, the representatives and/or the senators are participants who can listen directly and respond. But again, that's something that is put in place for the board's assistance as the legislative session is forthcoming.
I mean, from my perspective, there's no better time than right now to start those discussions, because by the time you're a month out from when the session starts, the legislators are just getting bombarded from all directions with ideas. But right now, they have recuperated a little bit from the end of their session, and they have, you know, as legislators, they're having a relatively quiet time, so it's a great time to plant seeds.
I think Senator Knopf is in Salem, working hard on redistricting right now.
There's that.
But, yeah, we should organize ourselves, get a real clear ask for this fall to set up for the short session next year. And, you know, Nick already mentioned, DL is for rulemaking. But, yeah, let's look for legislative asks here and get real clear on what could be out there. So we're talking about recreational vehicle parks in rural, but there's opportunities in cities also. City of Lapine has federal land all over there, and the federal understands that if they could be a partner, that maybe that's a good opportunity. We've got the southeast, or, yeah, southeast corner of Redmond above the airport there, where that may be a good spot to be able to have a little bit of land inside the EGB, part of a larger parcel, and just go do it. So, I mean, you know, this is pointing out that there's a hard, you know, hard line for rural future development, but, man, let's look for opportunities. You know, maybe there's, I don't know if there's anything around Bend, but I don't know if Sisters maybe, I don't know.
I mean, I guess I'd also ask Commissioner DeMone, you were the one who requested that we drill down a little bit on this. Depending on what your goal is, there may be other ways to look at it. I mean, if we want, if we're looking for affordable housing, there might be certain things that we look at. If we're looking for RV spaces for visitors, then there's other ways to look at this. I mean, for example, we know that you can build a campground, you know, that they have some of the same kind of requirements, but some slightly different, and campgrounds can include RV spots. So, I mean, it's, so, you know, are we trying to address visiting campers? Are we trying to address housing or affordable housing opportunities? Are we trying to address homeless, the need for, you know, kind of places, you know, authorized places for homeless people to camp? Or all three?
All three. So we've got a camp trailer on Spring River Road, and I went to go drive by it the other night, and there was already a camper life, you know, one of the big Sprinter vans parked behind it. So there's already more vehicles showing up, right? One of those people may have resources to pay a nightly fee, the other one maybe not. Or different amounts could be the right amount for those folks. If we had more power, water, sewer, long-term RV parks in a city, that's a great cost, low-cost living opportunity. Remember, it boils down to, is your RV 10 years or newer, or is it, you know, a 1972 Terry that you're just trying to get along in? We've got examples, as I say, in southern Deschutes County and Lapine, and a campground where, I mean, there's some pretty rough vehicles in there, but it's a sense of community. It's a happy, healthy place for people to live, very cost-effective. And it's not optimal, but it's a lot better than, you know, being out in the woods without, you know, water power and sewer, plus, you know, just job opportunities. So it's got to be all, everything. You know, when we talk about, well, let's have a, you know, let's carve off some spots for, you know, whatever the terminology is, lower income or something, that's fine, too. I mean, if we had spots, we have spots. You know, it's a shame we try to divide ourselves sometimes as us and them, you know, the low income and the other people. Cost-effective housing, jobs is going to be able to help people move forward. So I'm just pointing out that. I usually wouldn't go to the fact that, well, let's put a few low-income spots in there. You know, this is a cost-effective housing opportunity that's hopefully set at a market rate. And the market rate's got to be set by the land use costs, and land use is controlled by the State of Oregon, which gets very expensive because we're so proud of not allowing people to develop on privately-owned property.
But there are more than one way to skin the cat for various kinds of goals. So I guess that's why I'm asking whether our goals are housing affordability, you know, visitor camping, or we're kind of lower-income camping.
But I think the high-level goal right now in our community in central Oregon should be not allowing people to just, you know, set up on the side of the road or long-term in the forest. I mean, that's the goal. So if we can get to that tipping point where we're like, thank you, welcome for being here. If you're a short-time visitor, please, you know, go to the campground or do whatever you want to do. If you're, you know, struggling, here's a lower-cost opportunity, let's get you a job and some services. And you're not going to sleep out in the woods long-term and make an environmental, you know, situation out there. You're not going to sleep on the side of the road with, you know, pallets holding up to the side of your tent. So that is the goal.
You must be talking about East Antler and the pallets. And then what about all of the wood at Jennifer Ridge? Quite excessive there.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Yes.
And we do have an RV park at the fairgrounds, which is available. I did see a camper on Tweed for a couple days, and I think it was about, it was there for maybe five days, and it's moved on now. So, but, you know, Harper Bridge, definitely, we've heard from the neighborhood.
With this information about RV parks in the rural, that's kind of, that's going to full-on legislative ask, but there's opportunities out there. So then are we talking about investing ARPA dollars? Because one of the thoughts is if there could be a, for existing, well, so if you don't mind, let's talk about Cascade Meadows RV Park very specifically. So there's one parcel that's in southern Deschutes County. It's right at the base of Palina Camp in East Lake up there. They've got the land use, they've got water, sewer, and electricity there. Their septic is what's minimum, that's the hard stop for them for expanding, you know. I guess, you know, so this is a specific parcel, it's one I know of, but they're always about a third, well, a third empty, you know. I see two-thirds full in the summertime right now. But, oh, man, that seems like a great opportunity. I don't know if they would be allowed to set up for long-term camping or not, so that'd be a question specifically. And if we were able to empower them with a septic investment, you know, and I'm thinking $100,000, some number, is that enough to get them over a hump? Because they're like dying on the vine, they're just fading away. It's a struggle to make ends meet over there. And they're part of a network of other camps around the West and probably across the nation, but they're just kind of quietly hanging on, and they're not able to thrive. And if that land use is so valuable because it was in place before 1973, it'd be interesting if we could invest in that, you know, help them move forward. If it means investing in it, that's one thing.
For some other goals that we've discussed, I'm interested in making those kinds of investments. I don't, I'm not, on that brief description, I don't really understand the opportunity well enough to say that this is a great opportunity or not. I mean, I heard you say that it's not full most of the time. And I also heard you say that there's sort of septic constraints to expansion, but if they, if they're not full most of the time, do they need to expand? Or is it some kind of investment to kind of make it available for like a different market niche that would then kind of make the whole thing work better? Or, yeah, I'm sorry, I just don't, I don't understand the opportunity from...
Well, and as I say, once again, I'm hesitant to pull, you know, just pick out a private person's property and say, how about we help you? You know, but, I mean, this is a housing play, that's why I'm mentioning this specific one. And it's very unique and valuable according to, you know, our land use system.
It's definitely scarce.
Yeah.
But if it has 100 lots on it, so that means RV spots, and why is it so underutilized in today's world?
Well, it's changed hands over the years, I know that. And as I say, I think, as I say, we'd have to talk to the property owner specifically. So I haven't gone that far in it, but I just know that there's a few of these kind of things out there. South of Redmond is, you know, the happy camper's place or whatever it's called, I'm sorry. But there's a couple of these, and I don't know if they can or want to expand, and so you're saying they can't expand or they could, and I don't know if these are RV parks opposed to campgrounds, too. So the terminology may be getting mixed up here, too, we've got to be careful. So I'm sorry, are they on the list here?
Cascade Meadow.
Are they?
Cascade Meadows.
Yeah, there we go, okay, yeah.
Number two on the list.
So, yeah.
Yeah, the board just needs, I think, you'll need to be mindful of, you know, again, I'm not trying to single out Cascade Meadows, you know, those areas that are in southern Deschutes County, there's just, there's a shallow aquifer, shallow groundwater, and it's noted in the memorandum and in the matrix there. And I think, you know, again, looking at the case laws, I understand it, the moment you're looking for an RV park to provide long-term accommodations, it sure looks like the case law is saying that's an urban use. When you try to acknowledge that there's limited stays, there's, there might be a sweet spot there. I mean, I can't say that despotically, but the case law that's cited really shows a bright line that when it's being used more as permanent housing, you're talking about an urban use. And, you know, just...
Well, and that doesn't need to be. I mean, if this is, yeah, so, but if it's a thriving campground with existing land use, so, and a DEQ WPCF permit, I have a hunch that we have the technology to deal with that. And then it ends up being the same situation as, you know, Mount Bachelor biomass facility. You know, usually it costs, you know, X amount to do this, and then, yeah, and then all of a sudden, you just fall off a cliff because there's no way to get the money back. So if it's incentivized somehow, which is the same grant situation, I mean, they just should be thriving there, not fading away. And, you know, if our land use in the State of Oregon is taking away the future, because we've seen it, we've seen it change hands a few times over the years. People are excited that it's in that location, but they're not so excited when they get there. I mean, I haven't talked to a lot of people, but I've kind of heard that a few times over the years, like, yeah, this is an okay place, but it's, the pool doesn't work, and we don't know, you know, it's just weird, it's just weird that it struggles. And if it's not long-term RV, that's fine, too. I mean, it should be filled up with all the people out in the woods.
One question I have is, it looks like this one, this particular one, is zoned rural residential ten, which I believe is one of the eligible zones for HB 2006 emergency siting. So is there, if this particular RV park has spaces available on a regular basis, is there currently any regulatory barrier to considering using this as, you know, emergency housing for, you know, some of our neighbors who are nursing along an old RV and, you know, living out of that as their residence?
Commissioner James.
Didn't it have a sunset, that bill?
I'm sorry, I don't remember a sunset with House Bill 2006.
2006 was sort of like a renewal of a emergency policy.
What I was going to offer, Commissioner James.
Housing siting, yeah.
Yeah, but it was allowed in rural residential zones as well as within incorporated cities.
Yeah, but I thought there was a window of time in which you had to make application.
The piece that jumped out to me for 2006, separating the sunset clause, is that it requires what I'll call a notable entity, someone who's experienced in managing those emergency shelters. So you're talking about, you know, a demonstrated on-profit organization, a government entity, and so there's, the operation of that facility is something that obviously doesn't exist now. That would, I mean, big picture, it meets, it checks some of the boxes, but the management and operation per that bill really underscores the importance of an entity that has explicit experience managing the homeless population in a homeless shelter.
We are, we are starting to see those entities emerge a little farther north. I mean, the city of Bend basically put out a solicitation, you know, for entities to run a managed camp within the Bend city limits, and it doesn't seem to me like, though, that it seems to me that there'd be somebody within that pool who wouldn't mind driving, you know, 12 miles south to, you know, kind of support a managed camp in a different location. So if there's, if there's not land use or, you know, land use regulatory constraints around that kind of an opportunity, I mean, that is, it doesn't, it doesn't, you know, that doesn't mean that Cascade Meadows RV Resort could do anything kind of within the range of the spectrum of things we were talking about, but it does, does mean there's a pathway through 2006 to serve one of the slices that we were just talking about.
Well, this is private property, so, I mean, we're speaking about somebody who's not in the room, so we've got to be careful with that. But what an opportunity to be able to have a conversation with the property owner and say, okay, well, there are some options, you know, what are your goals and where we want to, you know, if there was support for helping you move forward, is there a vision for the future? So, as I say, I stopped in a while ago and gave somebody my card, and I haven't heard any back from anybody, but, as I said, that's one I just know of, because it's on my commute coming into work, that's why I know where it is, and I see it every day.
How far is that off the Highway 97?
It's right on the highway.
Okay.
And Commissioner, Mr. Chairman, if I may, Commissioners, I just pulled up House Bill 2006, Section 4, so Dave's memory was well-served. It acknowledges that Section 3 of this act is repealed on July 1, 2022.
So repealed as in the authorization, the implemented authorization would stop being...
The opportunity for a local government to process an application.
Yeah, a completed application.
Completed application, okay.
Section 3, a local government shall approve an application for the development for an emergency shelter, and then dot, dot, dot. So there's essentially a one-year window to receive a formal application and process it with the specific exceptions, you know, that are afforded to this use, to carve it away from a land use permit.
But that could be a permanent land use authorization after that point, if it does get through the process?
Yes, it would be, this is, this is an expedited process to establish a homeless shelter for a period of one year. Once it's established, yeah, it would be a vested use.
Great. Well, so this is another look, and we've basically looked at it like this before, so it's really seeing if there's any, well, as I say, I guess the path I see is talking to, looking for opportunities like this in a city, because that's the scenario that really resonates well. $600 a month with water and sewer, you pay for electricity, is a premier RV facility here in Bend. If you can do it for, you know... If you can do it for, you know, some amount like that and really stabilize somebody, not a permanent home, but it's a great lifestyle for some people, and if it's long-term, you know, year-round, it's a good starting point for some people. So I guess, you know, we're sitting at a board meeting of the Commissioners, if somebody wants to do this, please contact us. So, I mean, that's, that's the call, is, it's private property or could be publicly provided property, but it's going to be an operator of some sort, nonprofit or full market, just like our RV campground at the Fairgrounds. You know, I mean, that, that's a scenario.
Well, the KOA Campground in Sisters, actually, what, with the cabins, it has 116 spots. So that's, driving by in the winter, I'm not sure it's, has that many in there, but it's definitely, it's, it's really nice. And I have had dinner there. That was kind of fun. Our friends were practicing, driving with their RV. It was so big, I could not imagine. But anyway, they were driving all over America, so it was, it was, it's a great spot.
Well, us saying at a board meeting where there's probably not a huge number of people out there watching, that this is an opportunity and, and, you know, somebody who's, who's enterprising, you know, can grab onto this and, and, and make it happen, or, you know, and try to make something happen, I mean, that's great. But do we want, would we want to, would we want to task staff with doing some outreach? Say, hey, did you, are you aware that you owning an RV park in a rural residential zone area, you might have the opportunity to do X? It's not forcing anybody to do anything, but it, I mean, as we discuss very often, Oregon land use law is pretty complex, and, you know, people may not really understand the opportunities that are available to them unless somebody kind of reads the tea leaves, so to speak.
Well, are you referring to properties on this list, like all the properties, or just...
Well, definitely the ones that are rural residential zone. I mean, if that is, if those are eligible, you know, for this, this one-year window under HB 2006, I mean, that's a, these are potential allies in, you know, and partners in, in our efforts to, you know, find places for, again, you know, these would be, these might be perfect places for our, our, our neighbors who are living out of a, an old RV that they're nursing along and don't have a, you know, a stick-built house that, you know, or like a permanently located home that they, that they're in.
Yeah, I'm supportive of notifying them, maybe just, even just sending this report out to each one of them, because they may not be following, you know, just to the registered addresses of these properties and say, we're, these, you know, you are in a subset of property ownership and land use that's unique, and there may be willingness to have a discussion and even possibly invest in your property. I don't know if we want to say that much, but I mean, we're saying it in a public meeting, so...
I would, I'm, you know, you know, we're not promising to invest. I mean, I, I think it's great to hold out the possibility. And then, you know, it might also be, I don't know exactly where the forum is to put this, put this kind of word out. Maybe it's the Homeless Leadership Coalition. It'd be great to put the word out.
We've got to watch it, though. These are private properties, and you're, we're jumping into, there's maybe something here for you. I mean, I, yeah, Homeless Leadership Coalition probably isn't the, I mean, these are people's, you know, some of them are longer-term stays, but this is, these are commercial properties, privately owned, let's not...
Yeah, I'm, I'm just talking to the service partner piece, like, if you, if you need a service partner, a willing landowner.
That's the next step, if there's a willing landowner.
Okay, well, then, but if, but if we're communicating the opportunity to them, and there's not service partners that are available to field kind of ideas, then we're taking on the responsibility of, if any of these, if any of these RV parks are interested, we're taking on the responsibility...
Well, you're, so you're referring to House Bill 2006?
Yeah.
And I'm referring to a septic operator repair, which might help them get over a capital hump to make them grow. So, yeah, I mean, there's, there's multiple paths there, but I'm not just going down 2006. That, that would be a choice where they, they would have to ask for that. I wouldn't assume that I would want to offer it to them.
Okay.
Other than a simple notification.
Okay, well, this staff report is public information.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm going to tell some service providers that, that, you know, as, as far as I can tell, there's certain entities on this list that could be eligible for emergency siting of a, under HB 2006. And if they want to pursue that and, and reach out to people, then, I mean, this is, this is public information.
Yeah. But I'm just saying, as a private property owner, I might be offended that somebody would come to me and say, hey, we want to set up a, we're a service provider, and we want to set up a homeless shelter on your property. What's in it for me? Well, nothing. I mean, so I'm just saying, how does that conversation go?
Nothing. It's use of sites and a guaranteed...
Oh, so you're going to, would you pay a market value for that? I'm just saying, there's an awkward conversation right there.
Uh, you know, when businesses are exploring opportunities, there's lots of awkward conversations that happen. I mean, it's, it's like a potential partnership, but, I mean, again, you're not forcing anyone to do anything. It's just presenting people with another opportunity and choice. I like to have more choices than less, personally, but that's me.
Well, thank you for the memo.
Yeah, I mean, I would also kind of, you know, going with my earlier thought that, you know, RV parks are one way to skin the cat, but, you know, we have other tools. You know, I'd have some, I have some questions like, you know, okay, if, if RVs are allowed in campgrounds, then do we have an equivalent amount of constraints or the exact same kinds of constraints on doing an expansion of a campground or a new campground? I'd also, you know, one thing that I don't know, which I'd be curious about, is mobile home parks. I mean, are, are people allowed to lease a space in a mobile home park and put an RV there? Or does it have to be a mobile home? I mean, and, you know, like, where, you know, in my mind, there's, there's sort of a continuum in there, and I'm not sure if there's some, some sort of separation among different types of lodging or vehicular options. And if, you know, if, if really mobile home parks or campgrounds can get us at the same kinds of opportunities that an RV park could, then, like, it's worth, it's worth doing an analysis like this for all three of those options. So we, you know, we just understand what the path of least resistance is.
Yeah, and Commissioner, what I, what I would offer, again, just as, as this conversation winds down, is, is remember, mobile home parks, establishing new ones, that, that's going to trip goal 14. Mobile home parks are, allow for more than one residential dwelling on a property, and due to the, the land use system, as, as our chair noted, that is still limiting on allowing additional residential density in rural areas, mobile home parks will, will require a goal 14 exception. When you, when you think of campgrounds, I, I think it's, it's important, as the board duly noted, you know, that it's going to be really important for the, I think, the board to define their goals. Obviously, the chairman noted, and I think the entire commission recognized it, there's multiple fronts to, to address, the homeless population, the affordable housing, as, as two examples. With campgrounds, I would just remind the board that it's, that the limitations are, you're going to be serving a, a, I, I mean, a transient in that it's, it's, it's really designed for a tourist-oriented experience. There's, the state requires limitations on the amount of time you stay at a campground. So it can meet a, a certain constituency or a certain demand, but the moment a campground is designed for permanent stays, the case law that I just cited in the, in the memo elevates again. That's an urban use, and it's going to require a goal 14 exception. And so it's not, again, it's not to say that campgrounds can't serve one element of the county's commitment to try to provide a range of housing options, whether they're temporary or permanent, but unfortunately, the case law just really limits those, those permanent stays for reasons that I've summarized.
Thanks.
Peter, I have a question about the 11 cabins at the KOA in Sisters. Would you be able to rent those for, like, five months in the winter? Would that be allowed? The fact that this is such an historic site?
Commissioner, I don't know the answer to that. It's a good question, certainly one that I could, I could research. It raises a good question that I, I feel like it's appropriate to share with the board. When you think about, so, all of these RV parks, which have some cabins, were, again, were developed before there was a statewide land use system. And so, and they're, that one specifically is recognized as a legal non-conforming use. And so the staff is not evaluating, nor is the state evaluating how long people are staying there. But the moment you think about an expansion, it elevates, I think, a heightened awareness that the, so the RV park expansion, the RV park expansion has to be used for temporary person purposes. It will shine a light on that existing legal non-conforming use, and I can't say this definitively, but I, I would be cautious that, as, you have to bring the whole RV park up to code, up to standards, all of a sudden, there's the potential for uses that have been used for several months, well beyond a temporary stay, that are allowed under our, because these are grandfathered uses. It has the potential to undermine that, that, that vested use. And I would, I just express caution or vulnerability that, that expansion could tease out that stability that they were expecting, because the whole resort now has, RV expansion now has to be treated as one large temporary stay for visitors. And, you know, that, that could upset the apple cart for some that have been benefiting by, by longer stays that are allowed because these are grandfathered uses. So, Commissioner, it's a long-winded way of saying, I can certainly find out, but a shorter response is, to the extent that they're allowing those uses today, we're not concerned about it because they're grandfathered.
Okay.
So there's a lot, you know, unfortunately, there's just so many angles to this, you know, from a land use perspective, from an infrastructure perspective, the permitting that DEQ is going to require, it's, there's a lot of moving parts. And, and, yeah, goes back to what our chair said, this is Oregon land use, and unfortunately, that, that makes it somewhat unwieldy on the front end.
Well, we don't have to say it's unfortunate. I mean, it's, it's just, as time goes on, it gets a little bit more acute. The cost, the value of land is way up. The, the land use system has been litigated and negotiated for 50 years, and we're just at a point, we're at a point where either we hold on to it, we watch it get a little bit more tense and stressful, or maybe we open up some book just a little bit, say, well, maybe we should let something happen somewhere. I mean, if we're 20% privately owned in this county, 3,055 square miles, we got counties in the state of Oregon that are 10,000 square miles, and we're just stumbling over ourselves in a, in a few urban areas, maybe there's something there.
And I think that, that Peter and Nick reminding us of the natural disaster-driven temporary housing flexibility, that's a, that's currently, you know, open, and of HB 2006, those point, you know, those are sort of like pointers towards things that the legislature and the state have demonstrated that they're sympathetic to. So I, kind of within this whole realm, again, like, I would broaden it back out to the three, the three uses, the mobile homes, the RV parks, and the campgrounds. I, I'm really interested in how we, how we formulate what we would want to ask, ask our legislative delegation to, to, to help us make happen in the, in the next session or even the short session. Because I, there is, there's, there's clearly, there's clearly sympathy for housing and shelter needs, and we, it presents a good opportunity for, for us, you know, a county that's, you know, one of the most sophisticated counties in the state in terms of understanding land use and, and, you know, kind of parsing that apart and seeing where opportunities are. I think it's a great opportunity for us to, to float some, float some ideas.
Actually, looking at the bill sponsors, Representative Crop and Zika were both sponsors, not Maine, but sponsors of the bill, so perhaps they could come in if they had time in the next month or so and meet with us, and we could just talk about this, because them giving that deadline, or, you know, the sunset date next year is really, did they think the homeless issue was going to go away that fast? I would have, I honestly, I'm kind of surprised, I would have thought they would have tried to give it a, a longer life than July 1st, '22.
But it's already been extended once, isn't that correct? I mean, so it's sort of like, there are programs like that, that, you know, just get annual extensions, you know, or, or two-year extensions, two-year extension, two-year extension, and so...
But as business, it's always nice to, like, have a five-year, so you know it's actually five years. Will it happen again? This, this is more, it makes more crazy-making for people, you know, what can we do? And now we're realizing, okay, it's July 1st, is it really going to be extended again? You know, certainty really does help.
We have the opportunity to go in and say, we'd like, we'd like a five-year extension of 2006, and we'd like these other tweaks. So, you know, it's always, it's always easier to start with a tweak of existing policy than to, than to cut something from whole cloth.
Well, it's definitely set up for legislative update this fall. I mean, this, this will be September, October.
But do, Nick and Peter, do you have thoughts on how we prepare for that discussion? I mean, because I, I would guess the legislators, well, I mean, they have, they have their own understanding of land use and, and, you know, are pretty sophisticated, but, I mean, I, I think we could walk into a meeting like that with, you know, a couple of, you know, some, some concepts, some well-baked concepts that, that we could, we could put in front of them, as opposed to, you know, kind of having a sit-down and, and, you know, grasping around for a while.
One suggestion I have is that we reach out to the Association of Oregon Counties, AOC, and we really explain that there is House Bill 2006 that tried to address a targeted issue. We have these new interim, they're no longer interim, they're now permanent rules for interim sheltering. AOC is giving, and AOC is a big lobbying arm, as we know as well, and we know in the planning world that counties across the state, and some significantly more than others, are grappling with this crisis. AOC very well could be at the forefront of this and helping us, not as just a standalone county, but a lot of counties that don't have large planning staffs, or they just have a planning staff or one or two, but they're still in, experiencing this crisis. And they could be a great partner in helping us understand. So one of the first things we could do is ask them, are there any initiatives or anything that they're thinking about of, how would we allow House Bill 2006 with, maybe through rural making or through legislate, legislation on some non-high-value farmland or lands closer to cities and services with more opportunities that address a host of county-wide issues on an interim basis? An interim, I mean, five to seven years or five to 10 years, not just 11 more months or not just for people displaced by natural hazards, but, or natural disasters. But starting with AOC could be a great conversation as well, in addition to reaching out to our local legislators, and I do think we should reach out to DLCD staff to ask them, are there, what are the opportunities to utilize temporary rules? Because as Peter said, when we begin to talk about permanent housing, that crosses some lines that some statewide organizations probably aren't going to be willing to live with when it comes to changing state laws. But temporary, there may be some doors open, temporarily being five, seven, 10 years. I don't know what that looks like, but I'm just trying to think about all these different prongs that we may consider pursuing to, to address this.
I, I think those are great, great prongs. And I don't know, do we, how do we, how do we... And I don't know, do we, how do we, how do we bless or support or direct moving forward?
And I think, I mean, the answer is, let's go forward. I don't know that there's going to be any resistance to that. So maybe optimizing our interactions with AOC, just starting with Gina Nichol and say, okay, now that we're talking about this, you know, who's the policy person, who's the pro on this? And then go from there. And D L C D is fine, too. We can go there.
And that AOC, Nick, would that likely be Mallory Roberts? Or would that be one of the other legislative staffers?
I would begin with Mallory, but Lawrence Smith, Rob, I mean, they have such a great team. We could, we could find out from Mallory who might be the best person to, that might be addressing rural housing or homelessness issues, yeah. But we can certainly reach out to, we may be Peter, but.
I saw that direction. Commissioners, I'd be happy to make those correspondences, reach out to D L C D and to AOC to ask the very questions that our county administrator.
Commissioners.
I just wanted, with all due respect to our current county administrator, to our new county administrator, yeah, I'm happy to do that and will, can keep the board abreast of those conversations. The other thing, you're going to have a lot on your plate in the third week of October for a cannabis advisory panel, but I do have, I don't know if you saw the emails from me, but both Representatives Zika and Crop are holding the date for, to participate with the board's suggestions. So not to pile on, but, you know, to the extent you catch them at a break, or there's a desire to meet with them, with staff, one-on-one, you know, whether they're here or remote, that could be a possibility as well. So I put that on the back burner. So I can certainly keep you posted.
Good point. Thank you so much for that reminder.
Great.
Anything else for the topic? Seeing none, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next item, another good one, Senate Bill 391, Rural Accessory Dwelling Units Update. I'm glad we took a lunch break and came, brought these back, because that would have run a, that would have been a big one to rent it all this morning.
I agree. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I got the time of day right this time. For the record, Tanya Saltzman, Senior Planner. I'm here to check in on Senate Bill 391, Rural ADUs, as you obviously know. So this is meant as just a check-in, essentially, so staff came before the board on July 14th to kind of present that first pass at just parsing out all of the components of that bill and how we're going to tackle it. So I'm here today to kind of take that a little bit further and look at just a little bit more specifically on how the board, as well as staff, are going to be able to kind of approach all of, all of these components. As I noted in the past, essentially, there's two tracks to the Rural A D U bill. There's the stuff that's happening at the state level pertaining to wildfire, that's on one track. And then there's all of the things that the local, that the county government and county staff can, can address in the interim. And the hope is that by the time these states, state matters, particularly specifically the wildfire hazard maps are resolved in June of 2022, the local, the local component will have kind of gone along with that, so those tracks will meet. And then we'll be able to initiate the formal public process of adoption and all of that. So it's a lot, it's a lot on the local level to, to address. And so what I've tried to do for today is just to further refine that, that large matrix that I gave you of all of the components and kind of repackage them into what I'm calling a to-do list for the next several months in terms of, I would say you could, complexity-based or, you know, I don't want to say low-hanging fruit, because some of the things are easier, but they're still just as important, but they might be simpler for the board to deal with as, as far as decision points, whereas others might involve a little more collaboration and reaching out and a couple of meetings. So with that, I, I can go through these items in kind of the repackaged bundles, just to give you a sense of, you know, what the board might want to address sooner, what staff might want to address in the kind of middle ground, et cetera, et cetera. And our thinking is that staff will come back fairly, fairly soon with that kind of first batch, if the, if the board agrees to that approach, first batch of things that we can start actually talking about, talking about the actual content and how we're going to chip away at all of these items.
Tanya, I'm so happy that you are back here the first day of September, because on my notes on July 14th, I actually have a binder for this project, because it is really critically important. It said you're going to come back in three months. So the fact that you're coming back in a month and a half, that tells me that you've really done a lot of thought, and we need to get going on this, because I really want us to be ready, if at all possible, next June. So thank you for being here today.
We're happy to be here, and we recognize that this is a super priority of the board. So we're doing everything in our power to kind of address everything that we can possibly address realistically, so we're ready and poised, you know, we don't want to have that delay.
Thank you.
And recognizes that a lot of them will take, you know, some of them will be easier, some of them will be harder. So that's, yeah, yeah, so here I am. And I'll also note, and this is just a little bit of a nuance, like with respect to all of these decision items, whether they're the simple ones, the complex ones, I do want to note that whatever the commissioners, whatever direction the commissioners may choose, that doesn't mean that it's the be-all, end-all, final decision. This is just to get staff to a place, an educated place of the way we can craft those amendments, and those will be put out to the public in that process kind of after June of 2022. So it doesn't mean that if you say, oh, I think this should be the definition of usable square feet, that is the definition. This is just getting input from, from you to provide a starting point that will then go out to the public. So it's, I think it's helpful to be mindful of that as well.
So a couple of thoughts, is there a statewide discussion on this from the county planning groups or whatever? And then also, what other counties are the closest to our scenario? And I know maybe we're just way different than all others, but are there some cohort counties, I guess is what I was wondering?
From what I understand, and Nick, Mr. Lealak might have some ideas, as, as it is in many cases, I believe that Deschutes County is kind of forging that path. We are, we're sticking our necks out first, and we're going first, and we're kind of forging that path. And hopefully, you know, that's not to say we're not going to be without collaboration, or we've been, there's been a lot of communication with D L C D. For instance, on some of these simpler items, we are asking them, hey, are you guys going to, are you guys going to weigh in and provide some, some input? And the answer in many of those cases is no, that's going to be up to the local, local counties to make those decisions. Nick, I don't know if you know of any other counties that are.
Is there any cohort counties?
Forging that path? Or if it's just us?
I'm not aware of any others that are as early as we are in the process of initiating implementation.
Yeah, okay. Oh, there we go.
One has to be first.
Like a, like a icebreaker coming right through.
The balance between being on the bleeding edge and the leading edge.
Exactly.
Or on both.
Exactly.
So, and so you're thinking of basically pulling, or either having a discussion about each one of these as we go down, or pulling some out for discussion today? Is that correct?
Well, my intention today is not for the board to have to make any decisions on any of these specifics yet. I think that would be a subsequent meeting, but I just wanted to get your thoughts on kind of these, these general groupings and just give you an overview on saying, you know, these are things the board can probably decide fairly easily, these are things you might want to consider for the future, it might require, or be aided by community conversations. A lot of these issues are slightly, are complex, and they're going to require, you know, a little more thought than just one meeting. So I just want to kind of get that bug in your collective ear to, to start thinking, just to let you know what's going to be coming down the pike and the best way to approach that. So I was just going to kind of review those groups today, and there's no real, I don't anticipate any real decision-making on the meat of, of the bill itself today, if that sounds okay.
So what about like item number 10, pre-approved plans? Isn't that what someone in your department told me that LA County was doing, where you could actually just walk up to the counter and they had like a plan for a 900-square-foot A D U? Is there anything that we can do like that?
I know it's been mentioned for sure. Right now, the purpose of this is parse this as a bill, just period, what are the things that we kind of have to address, that the board has to address? There may be provisions or other aspects of it that the, that the board wants to add on top of that. I think that might be a separate conversation in terms of.
I'm sure it's separate. I just want people to be thinking about it, because if that would help take a couple months off of it, when you hear the tremendous need for workforce housing, it's quite frightening.
Yeah, I've inched my way up next to it.
Can't help it.
County Administrator, for the record, Peter Gatawski, Planning Manager. To Commissioner Dares' point, Tanya and I spent an hour and a half with the Central Oregon Association of Realtors yesterday about Senate Bill 391, and we answered all their questions. And we plan on checking in with them in the spring of 2022, and in the summer, when the amendments we think can get, will likely get kicked off. There was a question about these kind of pre-approved plans, and the response that we gave was, you know, it's one thing to have pre-approved plans that can be considered for over a garage, or in these urban areas where you're, where you've got access to sewer lines, access to central water lines. It's going to be harder, I think admittedly, to do that in rural Deschutes County, when you're talking about septic systems, drain fields, reserve drain fields, distance, 100-foot distances from, from domestic wells to preserve the integrity of that water source. The board is well aware of the different soil types that we have from Southern, from Southern Deschutes County, where we have Bollomy soils, and then you've got places near Smith Rock where, you know, Todd Cleveland would tell you, he can't even drive a, you know, a mallet or a staken, because the soil is so impenetrable. So it's something that we can, I think, could explore. I do worry about proprietary information, who's designing these and whatnot, but I think our goal is to, as Tanya noted, is to, is to get you prepared to think about those items that need clarification. We want to be mindful of your time, you know, so that we're targeting regular meetings to slice off some of these concepts, to get the clarity from the board. And where you find that there's a topic that maybe warrants a broader conversation for you to select it, you may ultimately decide this is something that can be discussed and clarified at, at this level, but we just want to make sure we're meeting your expectations to get the clarity so that staff can draft the amendments and have them situated so that in the summer of 2022, when we have the state wildfire hazard maps, and we know what that means, with the board's directive, we can go straight, figure out how to have an expedited hearing process to get these amendments on the books. So this is, this is, as Tanya's saying, we're just kind of setting the table for you, and then we're going to be coming back, and if I stay with that metaphor, we're going to be serving you dishes, you know, and, and getting your responses so that we can build these amendments. And it's going to take probably, you know, well into the, into the fall to get that clarity, and it could even take us into early winter for some of the topics. But again, because we know it's such a high priority, our thought was to get that direction from you today to make sure you're comfortable with, with the way that Tanya has singled out those concepts.
Can I ask another question, just so I can understand kind of where this is all When we, as we answer these questions and, or address these topics, and you're developing these, these code text amendments, is, is it going to be, is it going to be, like, are we writing a whole new section of code that's just about ADUs? Or are we weaving ADUs into all sorts of different parts of existing code? Or both?
Do you want me to respond?
Okay.
It will basically be both. Every, the two residential zones will acknowledge that there's, as a permitted use, there's an accessory dwelling unit. And then our supplemental provisions, I anticipate in 18 and, Deschutes County Code, Chapter 18 and 19, because there's two zones that, that are recognized as exception areas, will have specific provisions that lay out the detailed criteria that are reflective in Senate Bill 391. So it, it will be a lengthy set of amendments with numerous exhibits. So, you know, it's going to take us time to prepare that. And Tanya's point is worth reiterating again, the input that the board provides during this initial process is just to get us to establish draft amendments that can then be reviewed by the public through a hearings process. So it's, they're not set in stone, it's, and the board welcomes public input. And so, again, just getting some initial direction, and we can frame it as such, so that people aren't misunderstanding that somehow what the board has helped guide staff in preparing amendments isn't set in stone, it's just to get us in a position to have amendments, to, to receive public input through a formal adoption process.
I'll also note, it might be helpful if, when we did the historic A D U provisions, or legislative amendments, it'll probably be structured similar to that, just bigger. We basically have it, as Peter said, in each of those zoning chapters. The, it acknowledges that these things can exist, and then it's all laid out in that supplementary provision. So it'll be very similar to, to that language in, in the code, just a lot longer.
So I've, I've got a vision of, I'm formulating as I'm sitting up here, a piece of paper with an existing dwelling, a location of the well, and location of septic system, and then a house, an A D U next to it. So then you have a feel for, if this is a 2,000-square-foot home with a garage, this is 900 square feet, what would it look like if it, you know, is square or rectangle within 100 feet or at the edge of 100 feet? And then the setback, and what if there was a EFU parcel next door? What's the setback? I mean, there could be a really simple, kind of a line drawing that you could start to point to pretty quick, that may be a very valuable tool here. Because then, you know, and it reminds everybody that, okay, yes, the septic backup drain field connecting to the existing water system, what 900 feet looks like. If it was a 900-foot cottage or a 900-foot small home with a garage, or, because then, I've already thought through this, can I have like the, the world's greatest man cave double, you know, supersized barn with a small apartment on it now? Seriously? I mean, because if, you know, two, five, 20-acre parcels, that'd be interesting. So, and we talked about that, where was it, at the, at the River House? Was it National Association of Realtors or? We were at the River House a couple of months ago.
Home Builders.
Home Builders, Home Builders. Oregon Home Builders, yeah. And people were asking those questions. So that's where I remember thinking this through before, oh yeah, what does 900 square foot mean? And if it's a, you know, a nice big double-car garage and a little apartment on the side, is that okay or not? And probably is, I would assume it is, but just to lay it out a little bit.
Right, and these are the things that we're going to, yeah, look to clarity on, you know, we'll work with the board, obviously, to determine what, what is 900 usable square feet? What does that mean, for instance?
Yeah.
And that's one of the items. Yeah.
But, you know, as I say, a simple diagram like that can help everybody just kind of point to and say, oh yeah, when there's a well, you need to do this, when there's septic, you need to do that. If we're going to connect two together, you might need to do this, you know, would, are we always going to use the same septic tank or not? You know, that kind of stuff. And then 900 square feet, is that one or two bedrooms? Is, is that two or three people max? You know, I mean, just, there'll be interesting discussions all over that.
Just, this is coming to me right now, but I think once this is all said and done and passed, I imagine, just judging from the inquiries that I personally have gotten, obviously, there's going to be a ton of people asking, and it'll be interesting if we can just, yeah, create, you know, obviously, a website, but maybe some F A Qs and little, little diagrams, and just really have a public information campaign that says, you know, this is what this means, this is what it might look like. You know, that's way down the road, but I think that could be something very helpful for us to hand out to customers.
There's an interesting scenario of medical hardship dwellings, you know, because there's families that are really in that spot. If they had clarity on what this looks like, they could start building, some people, not a lot maybe, but some people might be ready to, hey, we've been meaning to do this for a while, so there's people that probably going to maybe even build before we have rules in place, but, you know, I'm just saying, it's, there's probably a natural market for this, even with valid medical hardship dwellings.
And what if it's in a building that's, let's say, 100 feet from your main residence? Will that be allowed? I mean, do we have that kind of clarity? Probably not at this point in time.
We don't at this time, no.
Yes. I actually, we lived in two 900-square-foot manufactured homes once, and it's, it's amazing, I was, when I remembered that they were 900 square feet. It's unbelievable, it's very comfortable, with a lot of children, I might add. It was, but, yeah, it's, it's definitely, it's really positive for workforce housing.
Our first house in Hawaii was 800 square feet, so I know what it feels like.
Well, my first one was 700. It was really fun.
Yeah, the A D U that I had constructed on top of my garage that I rented out to a. a, you know, a, a young, starting professional in our community is 600 square feet.
There you go.
I mean, and, and that's, it's, she's got lots of room for one person. I mean, it's.
As a New Yorker, I could probably beat all of those stories.
Oh, come on, Tanya.
I grew up in a shoebox.
200 square feet, what?
Anyway, I couldn't resist.
I love it.
So if the, would the board like me to kind of go through these three or four categories and, and just briefly talk about those? Or do you get the gist from the memo? Or what would you, how would you like me to proceed now? Again, not talking about necessarily the, the substance of each line, but just kind of the groupings and the bunchings.
I, I follow the logic of the, of the breakout into the four groups and, and I think it makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, I don't know that we need to go through the memo as much anymore. I mean, it's well laid out. It's good to have these work products out there for the community to see also and hear some of the discussion about this. And the reality of the, yeah, Deschutes County's community and land use is such that we're going to be out, probably way out in front of the pack around the state.
I guess for me, more of the question is, when do we start?
Well, staff will come back probably, I would anticipate, within the month for that first batch of kind of the more simple stuff, and we will kind of aim to get maybe either some draft language or some thoughts from our building department, for instance, about the usable square feet, or just see what other people do or other counties do in general. Things like that we can bring to, to the board for discussion on the, the first kind of package of items.
Well, and, you know, some of the definitions that are unclear also, you know, the 100-foot, is, is that, you know, inclusive or outside or at the edge of? So we just, we should probably start to make some assumptions along those lines and float it to whoever's going to give us feedback. Is, who's going to give us feedback if we make a choice that somebody in the legislature didn't agree with?
I believe, is Representative Zika actually working on a few amendments? And that's why it's really important, I think, to bring Representative Zika in so he can hear what we're concerned with. Does it have to be the whole 900-square-feet within the 100 feet? Or can it be like a teeny corner that you, and you can go away from the house? He had said something about expanding that 100-foot, but, you know, it's, you know, it could be very significant, you know, if it's the whole structure within it, so.
That's what I was talking about, is the graphic. If we lay a graphic on the table and say, well, this is, this is what we mean when we say 100 feet, which you put two corners with 100 feet between it, and then somebody's like, nope, it's got to be inside of the 100-foot, you know, so we need to get clarity on that pretty quick.
Yeah, and I think staff can do, we can do our research in terms of, you know, it's not specifically pertaining to this bill, but how other municipalities and counties kind of, how they do their language in terms of any sort of dimensional or distance requirement. We can talk around to our, our other colleagues in CDD to just kind of crowdsource the, the best practices that are, that are done and then bring that back to the board, in addition to potential input from the legislature and that type of thing.
To the extent that we can get valuable insights from understanding existing unpermitted ADUs, I mean, they, you know, this whole 100-foot question, I mean, part of the reason we, we will struggle with this is because there are, there are existing unpermitted ADUs that we want to, we want to bring into, bring out of the shadows and, you know, we will want to be, we'll want to understand where, you know, whether they fit within 100 feet or not, so that we can try and make it, make things work. Those kinds of insights could be useful in a lot of other ways as well, you know, thinking about some of these water and septic type issues, you know, this, this question of like, well, is this going to be on your existing well? Or, you know, some, you know, could it be some new supplemental water supply? I mean, I talked to, I talked to Kyle Gorman about, our water master, about, you know, kind of an existing, you know, if you get an exempt well permit for our rural residents, you know, how much, you know, how much water that allows you to get out of that well? And it sounds like it should be plenty for a substantial-sized residence plus a, an ADU. But, you know, depending on the spatial kind of arrangement of existing houses and existing wells, you know, maybe that, maybe that is an existing unpermitted ADU, is that maybe a huge complication or it may not be? So, yeah, I guess if there's, if there are ways that we can talk to the people within CDD who are, kind of have a sense of, of that, that, that body of existing unpermitted ADUs and, and, you know, get in, get any insights possible that could help us address some of these questions, that would be, that would be great as well.
Yeah, I think our, our goal will be to get all the tools and the insights that we could possibly can to be able to provide the board, you know, with as much information to make as informed a decision as possible. As for illegal ADUs, I'm not entirely sure how much documentation we have of those besides potential violations, I suppose. But I will say anecdotally that in our class yesterday with Central Oregon Association of Realtors, that was a topic that came up a lot. That was definitely, you know, whether it's where it's located, how big it is, what have you, but that was, that seemed to be a significant concern, you know, what, what does this mean for illegal ADUs that are just outside that distance or just this much bigger? So that is definitely floating around out there that, I think that's going to be an interesting facet of this whole conversation.
Great, thank you. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good discussion.
We'll be back.
At this time, other items? Anything else?
We had a, a meeting of the Emergency Homeless Task Force yesterday and, and for those of us who are not very tech savvy with online, online whiteboarding type technology, it was, I, I had some real challenges keeping up with what was going on in the meeting. But there was, there was some good discussion about advancement of managed camp and permanent supportive housing concepts at that meeting, as well as just trying to get an understanding of all of the different entities who have roles in this, in this realm of homeless services and, you know, to try to, trying to map that out so that we can understand kind of where there's gaps and, you know, how people need to be working together.
We will have our meeting tomorrow at City Band. They're well attended, people are very engaged at this point in time.
Yeah.
Anything else, Commissioner Dare?
No, I mentioned yesterday what I was doing.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, so at this time, we're going to go to an executive session under 1926602E, Real Property Negotiation.